For the record, Mr. Caldwell is not present.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell is not present. And if you didn't hear the earlier notification, if you do want to speak tonight, you do have to sign in and we will go by the sign-in sheet hopefully. People will be coming in, so hopefully we can get them all signed in, let everybody get a chance to speak.
I don't know where it is.
Yeah, it's over by the quilt.
Sir, there's that sign-in sheet on one of this table here?
Yes, sir. The sign-in sheet is at the table underneath the quilt. The first item of business we'll do is I want to get an approval of the agenda for this evening, which we only have this one application on the agenda, so if I could get somebody to approve the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Mizell, second by Mr. Wiseman, all those in favor say aye. Those ayes, motion approved. This is how we're going to try to run this meeting tonight. What we'll have is the staff for the planning commission will present the application. We will go from the staff, we will have questions for the staff, then we will let the applicant come up and speak on behalf of his application, and we'll have questions for him, then we'll have, I think there's at least one attorney, maybe more, representing some citizens, we will try to move them in and let them speak, and then we'll go with public comment. But that's how we'll try to run this meeting tonight. So I ask that everybody be cordial to each other, try to respect each other. I know there's a lot of people here against it, there may be some here for it, the applicant deserves the respect that we Scott Countyans can show, so let's show them how proud we are of our county by showing some respect. Also, we're going to have, kind of like if you can, try to have a time limit on how long you speak. There's a lot of people here, if everybody wants to speak, we'd probably be here until tomorrow. So if you hear a comment that's already been made, just kind of, I know we're going to get plenty of applause, let's try to keep that short too, try to keep the meeting moving along. But you know, if somebody's already said something you've already, you wanted to say, just kind of move on. It's going to be a lengthy meeting, so let's try to keep it rolling. First thing I want to try to do is for those who have signed up, we do ask you to stand, hold your right hand and swear in, please. I'm going to swear everybody in that wants to speak tonight. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth of the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
Thank you. All right, the application we're about to appear is the Waste Services Zone Change, ZMA 2017-57. Joe?
All right. Okay, the application tonight is ZMA 2017-57, a zone change request for 179.24 acres from A1 to I2 on the south side of Double Culver Road, east of US 25 in northern Scott County, south of the existing Central Kentucky landfill. The project site is in north-central Scott County in a rural area outside the existing urban service boundaries. I'll go through a little background and timeline just to, I guess, update everybody on where, how we got here. The Waste Service of the Bluegrass purchased municipal landfill from the city of Georgetown in 1999. They began operating that landfill on 102.8 acres that they purchased from the city shortly thereafter. They purchased 500 acres to the south and east of the operating landfill in 2010. In 2012, they began a permit process to expand that landfill with the Kentucky Division of Waste Management. In 2013, as part of that application, Waste Services obtained a signed zoning compliance form from the existing planning director at the time, Earl Smith, which stated expansion of the landfill on current property boundaries does not conflict with Scott County planning and zoning ordinances, and that was part of the zoning form required for that administrative application for the expansion. 2014, the city of Georgetown closed, transferred the closed residential cells, which aren't really part of this application per se, and they transferred that land to Waste Services of the Bluegrass as part of, that was part of the sale agreement for the landfill. I bring that up only because 159 acres is referenced in the application, in the application we have for you tonight. So that 57 acres is the closed cells, 102.8 acres roughly is the existing approved landfill site parcel boundaries. The zoning letter was amended in January 2017 to clarify the definition of landfill essentially, and it clarified that accessory uses, borrow areas, sedimentary ponds, uses that are needed to support a landfill are part of the landfill, and expansion of those areas outside the original property boundaries requires a zone change of that property since, based on state statutes, non-conforming use standards and our local zoning ordinance, non-conforming use standards, that would be considered an expansion of the existing non-conforming use on the original property boundaries. So the determination was that if you went off those boundaries, the original boundaries of the property, you need to rezone to either I1 light industrial with conditional use permit or I2 heavy industrial. The BOA, Board of Adjustment case upheld that a month later, and the applicant, Waste Services of the Bluegrass, appealed that zoning letter, and that appeal is in Circuit Court currently, hasn't been resolved. There was another group that also appealed the letter on different grounds, both those are not part of this case, I just wanted to give a little background on that. In order to try to conform to our local zoning requirements and to resolve the case, Waste Services of the Bluegrass applied for a zone change for that area outside the original landfill boundaries that would be used for sediment ponds, soil borrow, clay material for the liner, for the construction of the landfill, and any other uses associated with the landfill. So that's why we've got the application for you tonight to rezone that area on adjoining 500 acres to I2 heavy industrial. The three areas, the area we're really talking about tonight is in yellow, number three, that's the 500 acres that was purchased by Waste Services of the Bluegrass on which they plan to use for soil borrow and clay to build the proposed expanded landfill. Two in green is the existing landfill site, and one is that, those closed cells that Waste Services of the Bluegrass now owns parcels one, two, and three, but one and two are what's referenced in the application as the 159 acres. As part of the zone change, they've submitted a concept plan that shows the areas that they wish to use for soil borrow, ponds, and landfill uses. I don't have a pointer, but it's the area in yellow on the concept plan. The area they're seeking to rezone is a larger area, it's in blue, doesn't show up very well on that image, but it follows the northern boundary of that 500 acres, the eastern boundary, and then follows, I think, the creek line, a low area to the south of that yellow, and then encloses to the left of that yellow area. So the applicants are proposing to use for landfill purposes, for support uses for the landfill, the yellow, the area in yellow, but they're asking to rezone the larger area, 179.24 acres. The yellow area approximated at about 75 acres, they may have a better idea of the exact acreage of that area, it's approximately 75 acres. Anytime we get a zone change, we have to look at KRS Planning Statutes Guidance on Zone Change Requests, and look at the standards that are set for the applicants to meet to justify as a zone change. Essentially, those are, does it meet our conference of plan? And if it doesn't, if it doesn't clearly meet the guidance of the conference of plan, either the future land use map, or goals and objectives, or other elements within the plan, or referenced in the plan, then it must meet either one of the following, A, that the existing zoning is inappropriate and the zoning request is appropriate, or B, there's been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved not anticipated in the conference of plan, which have altered the basic character of the area. So that's the standard that staff looks at when evaluating a zoning change request. Here's another image of the site location, but this is also the future land use map in the current conference of plan. All the areas in green are planned for agricultural uses in the future land use map. The colored areas, essentially with the tan buffer, are the existing urban service boundaries of Sadieville Standing Ground in Georgetown. So this site as well, within the rural service areas in an area planned for agricultural uses in the conference of plan. There are other elements of the plan that we look at essentially to see if there's any guidance as far as citing large industrial uses, or in this case, landfills. And there isn't a citing ordinance or reference to a citing ordinance, or other guidance that helps us evaluate the appropriate location for a landfill, other than reference to environmentally sensitive lands ordinance. And we have two large contiguous areas of environmentally sensitive lands that we, that would be clearly inappropriate in our reference in the conference of plan, and those are the reservoir property, large area of continuous land purchased for a potential future water source for Scott County. That area clearly would not be appropriate for landfill. And the Rose Springs Opera for Recharge area, which extends from downtown Georgetown at Royal Springs, south into northern Lexington, and that covers a large area, essentially following Can Run Creek, but that area is protected by numerous ordinances, and it's one large environmentally sensitive area in the county that would be protected clearly from landfill development. Other than that, the only guidance in the plan would be to protect environmentally sensitive lands during development, and karst areas, major flood, or flood plains, and creek conservation corridors, major creeks. So clearly, it doesn't meet the future land use guidance for the area, it doesn't clearly meet the guidance of the goals and objectives, and any reference to specific ordinances or plans that are in place. So we look at A and B. A is, is the existing zoning appropriate or inappropriate, and is the zone requested appropriate? Well, the area in question has been zoned agricultural since the 1970s, it's been designated for agricultural uses on the future land use map since the 1970s. It has no frontage on a public road, it's heavily wooded, it is adjacent and shares a buffer with the existing landfill site because the owners of the landfill have purchased it and waived the buffer requirement. Landfill, operating landfills require 250-foot buffer from property lines, which can be waived by the owners of the property. So the landfill has, use has expanded to the edges of the 500 acres because it's under the same ownership, but I believe that that changes the nature of the agricultural property, or the ability to waive that buffer is there to prevent the impact of a landfill on adjoining uses. So if under different ownership, it would be clearly agricultural property, agriculturally planned and used for its whole since the early 70s and beyond that. It also joins the Veterans Memorial Wildlife Management Area to the south. So based on this finding is that the existing zoning is appropriate, even though it does share a buffer both with the landfill and the wildlife management area to the south. Item B, have there been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature since that were not anticipated in the conference of plan? Well, the conference of plan has recently been updated, some additional goals and objectives were added to the plan, but the citing criteria was not changed for industrial uses, so we can't really rely on that existing conference of plan to recommend that expansion of this area is appropriate. What we can, what we can look at is our changes on the site. There have been physical changes on the site. Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewers extended a sewer line to capture the leachate from the sewer, from the landfill and extend that south to the city of Georgetown Plant Number Two at Toyota. There is a partnership with Toyota to capture the methane in the landfill gases to generate electricity. There's been an underground feeder line run to the Toyota plant to reduce the greenhouse gases at the landfill, capture that energy from the gases at the landfill, and use that to help production at Toyota. Both these physical changes of the landfill have made it more sustainable and more beneficial as a land use for the county as a whole, both because of its benefit to Toyota, also for its reduction in environmental impacts to the county. There have been economic changes as well with Toyota's, or with growth in Scott County and the Bluegrass region, there's an increased demand for landfill space, and that space has had a premium in the area as landfills have gone more regional in scope and size, and the number of landfills have been reduced over time. Also increasing environmental regulations in the MBS, which is not in my backyard, it's a planning term, has accelerated the trend towards regional landfills, and also increased the cost of operating permitting, running and closing the landfill of a larger size. So there has been a trend towards these, towards away from each municipality, starting the landfill for their own ways towards these regional landfills. So those are obvious economic changes that have happened. There have, however, been other major changes that affect the suitability of the property for its proposed increased regional size, landfill size. Increased size and operating levels of the landfill have increased the risk to the community from heavy traffic, as we've seen on the roads, from increased waste collection and truck traffic to the landfill. Potential odors, leachate spills, or other environmental spills, water runoff, so forth, increasing operating noise and dust from a larger operation. And the other, I guess, major change that I would point out is that the Veterans Wildlife Management Area was created about, I think, with the same time, the same time the applicants purchased the property, 500 acres, the remaining acreage was purchased by the state for the wildlife management area, and that's a public use property that's open to the public for fishing, hunting, recreation. It was purchased by Department of Fish and Wildlife with $3.25 million of, from Kentucky Wetlands and Streams Mitigation Fund, and that property was purchased because it was a sensitive, included many sensitive habitats, was a mature woodlands area, and was deemed to be a sensitive area that was appropriate for public, public area, public protection area. That property was purchased at the same, essentially the same time roughly. As part of the zone change, we have to look at the concept plan, they have submitted the concept plan and are seeking to get the zoning approval along with the concept plan. As I said, it's a larger area than they're actually, they're actually going to use for uses to support the landfill. They're asked for 179.24 acres of the larger 500 acres of that, the smaller area in yellow that will fill use for soil borrow and extraction of minerals for use in construction of the landfill liners and closure of the landfill. The buffer areas they've included in the I2 zone request, those don't necessarily have to be zoned I2, and I would recommend, and I'll get to it at the end, I would recommend, and I'm not even sure if this is practical, because I don't really know the process that they have to, the standard they have to meet with the state Division of Waste Management, but if possible or practical, I think it would be better for those areas to be zoned, to be left A1 if this is approved, and not designate the whole property I2. So the concept plan has five, maybe two that are related, but five restrictions that they, they're proposing to put on themselves, so self-imposed restrictions, and if this concept plan is approved with the zone change, those restrictions will be enforced through the regular enforcement process of Scott County government. Number one is they're pledging that no waste will be deposited on this new I2 zoning property, so in theory, if this yellow area were to change based on findings on site, you know, unexpected soil findings on site, they would have to come back through the process to amend that yellow area. So that yellow area, they're showing as the borrow and extraction area. The I2 areas to be limited to those only, those uses I mentioned, to support the landfill construction and closure, they won't be used for waste disposal, so no municipal solid waste or special waste or other waste will be put off the original boundaries of the landfill onto this adjoining 500 acres. They will not use the rail spur for any purpose to support the landfill purposes. All licensed solid waste vehicles hauling from the Bluegrass Transfer Station will be routed through exit 136 of I-75 at Sadieville. They operate the Bluegrass Transfer Station where I believe all the municipal, pickup municipal waste in Lexington is routed through that station. I believe the Justman County contract that they have would be routed through that station, but any trucks that they control running out of that station, they're pledging to haul, to bring up I-75, not to use US 25 through the more heavily populated areas, Mallard Point and those areas. So they come up to Sadieville and down US 25 to Double Culver. And they're also pledging that no waste will come from out of state, so all wastes coming into the landfill will be from Kentucky counties. The proposed expansion itself, these are the boundaries, are the image of it, the edge, I don't have a pointer, but the edge of the 500 are these two, the eastern boundary on the right-hand side with the two sedimentation structures that'll be off to the right. I just wanted to show you the image of the 102 acres. So basically, this is the boundary of the 102 acres. Just kind of an image, this isn't a bet, I couldn't find an image of the final profile, but this is essentially showing that they're going to piggyback the new landfill if approved over the two, the operating landfill, and they have a commercial demolition debris landfill and a municipal solid waste operation, they're going to piggyback over that with the new approval, the new expanded landfill. The peak height of the landfill after final cover, according to their Division of Waste Management application, will be 1,170 feet. Again, I'm just showing the concept plan, so I can go through a few of the details on the concept plan. Traffic generated, there's no traffic study per se asked for because of the volumes of truck traffic would not impact the level of service of the road, but they are. We got 2017 traffic number, truckload numbers, and they're averaging 114 truckloads a day, 2458 truckloads a month coming in Double Culver, approximately a truck if you average it every five minutes at the landfill. There's only one access through Double Culver Road, which is a state minor collector road, that will remain the same, they're only proposing to, with the expansion, to have that one entrance remaining. They do have, I believe, an access easement through the wildlife management area to the west to 25. I don't know that the site distance would be better at that if they did propose that road in that direction, and I don't, they may be able to answer this, I don't know if it would be permitted by the wildlife management area, because I do believe it's, goes through that property. Again, they're pledging all trucks that they control will come through exit 136. Just an idea of the existing operation scale, 114 trucks a day on average, 24,000 tons a The amount of, and I did have in my staff report a number of 415. The amount of, and I did have in my staff report a number of 415,000 tons, but that is the amount of material they've accepted. That includes some other material that they bring in the required way. So the actual, from 2017 numbers, from what I calculated, they're bringing in about 35,000 tons of solid waste from Scott County, 286,662 tons from out of county. So approximately 11% of the municipal solid waste is coming from Scott County, 89% is coming from out of county, special waste 70% from in county, and 83% from out of county. Buffering, I mentioned before, the buffer, I believe the Division of Waste Management requires a 250-foot buffer from an active landfill to adjoining property owners of buffer maintain. The concept plan they're showing actually includes a 300-foot buffer to the north to remain undisturbed but zoned I-2, and 500 feet to the south, zoned I-2 to remain undisturbed according to the concept plan. Our zoning only requires a 15-foot buffer between I-2 and A-1 property. So I would recommend if approved that the buffer be increased, either be maintained at this level or at least the 250-foot buffer requirement. Again, the buffer areas, I believe, could be zoned A-1, they don't need to be zoned I-2. As far as environmental permitting, there's a long and intensive process to get zoning or to get approval for a landfill construction. And a lot of agencies that have to review and permit the process, they currently hold multiple permits from the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for the operation of landfill, Kentucky Division of Water for Discharges and Water Quality, and the US Army Corps of Engineers for Wetlands Permitting. Locally, the inspections and so forth are coordinated by Scott County Solid Waste Coordinator, which is an employee of Scott County Government. He coordinates with Division of Waste Management to oversee the environmental permitting and testing and so forth and reporting. Solid Waste Coordinator is also in charge of or over the development of the Scott County Solid Waste Plan, which is updated every five years. And that's really the other plan or report that regulates solid waste management in the county. Solid Waste Plan was updated last fall for this coming five-year period. In the plan, it said that the total capacity authorized to date at the landfill was 9.6 million tons. The total amount disposed to date was 1.8 million tons with the remaining authorized capacity of 7.8 million tons. The applicants at workshops said that's, that may be the authorized amount, but what they're actually permitted for is 3.5 million cubic yards with the amount deposited to date through '17, I believe, 2.2 million cubic yards. So a remainder of about 1.3 million cubic yards. And a cubic yard of municipal solid waste is a little less than a ton. So generally, you can, cubic yard and a ton or equivalent of measures for municipal solid waste approximately. So that gives, that leaves approximately four years of capacity at the existing permitted The Solid Waste Plan projects county needs through the year 2037 or through a 20-year period, and based on population growth and existing demands. So the plan recommends that 700,000 tons of waste be reserved for county use for over the next 10 years, and recommends that out-of-county waste be limited to 300,000 tons per year for up to 10 years. So they're about at that level now. So based on the Solid Waste Plan, it would limit any increase in disposal beyond what is happening out there now. The plan also, in case the county will explore hiring a third-party inspector to monitor environmental issues for the landfill, I'll link there, I'll barge into that now. So in conclusion, I guess I'd, to summarize my report and recommendations, a rezoning of the subject property to allow for extraction, storage and processing of minerals and raw materials to be used for borrow areas, drainage ponds, and monitoring wells and buffering, which is their description of the uses that will occur on the property, is a prerequisite to further expansion of the landfill. So they have to get a zone change to allow for this expansion of the existing landfill to a larger size. The proposed expansion will increase the height of the landfill to 1,170 feet in elevation after final cover is placed on the landfill, 110 feet higher than the highest current natural elevation in Scott County, which is 10,000, or 1,060 feet, and 200 feet higher than surrounding bridges. So it's a major expansion proposed. The increase in heavy truck traffic and waste disposal at the current permitted landfill has increased significantly from 2015. And the cause, I guess, of that increase has been the increase in the amount of waste coming in from outside the county. So that's been really what's driven this major increase in waste coming in. In 2017, an average of 2457 truckloads and 35,000 tons of material was accepted per month at the landfill, 89% of the municipal solid waste, and 83% of the special waste is coming in from outside the county. The municipal landfill on the site or in the area was first established by the city of Georgetown as a municipal landfill for Scott County waste. Since the sale, it's changed completely to be a regional landfill to serve the Bluegrass area primarily, but counties statewide. The increase in size of the permit, the proposed permitted expansion, or proposed expansion will increase the risks and liability to the community in terms of potential environmental filth, truck traffic, heavy truck traffic, road maintenance, increased odors from a large, larger and more complicated gas entrapping system and leachate collection system, and just other general risks associated with the increase in size and scale of the landfill. The applicants purchased adjoining 500 acres in 2010, 10 years at least after they began operating the municipal landfill site. The proposed expansion of landfills is such a, is of such a size on the existing former municipal site that it requires use of the adjoining 500 acres to make it feasible. The subject property proposed for heavy industrial uses is planned for agricultural uses in our comprehensive plan, future land use map. The existing agricultural zoning has been in place since the adoption of zoning in the county and is appropriated for the site based on its location adjacent to the wildlife management area and its natural wooded features and lack of access to existing public roads. There have been changes in the community at the landfill site as the landfill has grown and expanded its operation. However, there's been insufficient evidence submitted into the record to show that the rezoning of the subject property meets the requirements of KRS 100 for zoning map amendment. So based on those findings, staff recommends that the requested zoning map amendment for 179.24 acres doesn't meet the, does not satisfy the requirements of KRS 100.213. However, if after presenting testimony, additional testimony that we don't, we didn't receive in the record up to this point, the planning commission is satisfied that they have met the requirements of KRS 100 for a zone change, we recommend that the planning commission rezone a smaller area to include either Phase One of the soil borrow area and the sedimentation ponds with a 15-foot buffer around it so that it can be phased in over a longer period where the development of the landfill can be monitored to meet the existing solid waste plan, to meet the environmental requirements of all the permitting agency and the Scott County standards. Or if the planning commission feels that it's not practical to rezone a smaller Phase One area and recommends approval of the whole area of landfill borrow, it's recommended that the, that the buffer areas will remain I, A-1 and not be zoned I-2 since the uses there are proposed to remain natural. And those areas aren't proposed for use as soil borrow or other landfill purposes. I don't believe they need to be zoned I-2. And if the planning commission recommends approval, I would suggest the following conditions be added. One, approval of concept plan that they've submitted along with all the voluntary self-restrictions that they've imposed on the concept plan, that the applicants follow the guidance of the Scott County Solid Waste Plan as it relates to the operation of the landfill. Three, that they follow all state, local and federal regulations in the operation of the landfill. And that the borrow areas be buffered at least 250 feet from adjoining property owners. And if, if the concept plan is adopted as proposed, just to make sure that those areas, it's clear that those areas that are left undisturbed remain that way as a buffer from adjoining property. That concludes my report. If you all have any questions now, or I can answer them at the end of the presentation.
Then what, Honored Commission, have a question for staff this time?
Joe, what is the proposed growth of Scott County in the next 10 years?
I think the 10-year number is 73,000. We're growing at 2% to 3% a year. I think I had it in the staff report, the number of 2037, but I think it's 73,000 a
Joe, you said that...
What?
That's my question. Can you hear me back there?
No.
Can you hear me now? I can speak loud enough. Joe, you said that the surrounding hills, if this expansion was allowed, by the time they top this hill out, this mountain, trash, whatever they're going to call it, by the time they top it out, it'll be 200 foot higher than the surrounding hills. Is that what you said? I just want to make sure on that.
Yeah, roughly, I think there's some reaches that are 970 to 990. I think the north is about 970, 970, 980.
That's my question. Anybody else have any questions?
Not now.
Not now, Joe, maybe later. Thanks.
That's his, not mine.
It's not working.
Where's Whitney?
She said it might be the batteries.
Yeah.
It's on, but she said it might need batteries. They've got them. I don't know where she went. Oh, you got them?
At this time, we'll hear testimony from the applicant, please.
Thanks, ma'am.
No, he's putting batteries in. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
Did you put the microphone on yourself?
Sure.
Folks, we had a request. If there's any empty seats, can we kind of squeeze in so everybody can try to get a seat in? So if there's any empty seats, try to squeeze in, please. Thank you.
There you go. It worked a second there. There you go. Thanks.
It quit working again.
It's not working again. That's his.
What are you doing?
Nothing.
That's working fine.
I think it may be voice acting.
Yeah. Go ahead. Say your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is David Royce. I'm an attorney, and I'm here representing Waste Services of the Bluegrass and Waste Services Realty, the applicants on this zone change request. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight. I have representatives of Waste Service with me here, as well as their engineer from Ken Byrnes. And I want to say, before we get started, just as a couple of housekeeping matters, because this is a public zoning hearing pursuant to KRS 100, I need to ask that the zoning file of this matter be made a part of the record. That would include within it the notifications that were posted, published in mail, and we have David with those, just confirming that proper notice was given. Looks like it was. I will, before I start, I want to say something, both to the planning commission members and to the public. First of all, let me tell you, it's a little awkward to stand up here with my pack. So I apologize for that. Set up the room, it's kind of how we have to do it. Hopefully, everybody can at least see. The second thing I was going to say was that it is, it is good to see the turnout. When you're on my side of the table in a matter like this, it's a little daunting. But my view is that thankfully, this is a country where public turnout and the ability to come out and speak is a sign of a vibrant community. And I will tell you that I fully expect, and I know my clients expect, to show everyone who's here respect for me, because you're commended for saying what you have to say. At the same time... At the same time, I hope that we'll be shown respect. I can only ask to the members of the planning commission, as I know your counsel has advised you and you've heard many times, these hearings are referred to as quasi-judicial because the planning commission actually sits somewhat in the role of a judge and they're bound to be objective and unbiased and hear the evidence and make a ruling on that. So on the one hand, while certainly public turnout is important and the evidence that's submitted from the public and from the applicants is important, it's not a basketball game. And at Kentucky games, just because we've got a good home crowd doesn't necessarily mean we win, nor should it. Score based on the game and the rules is what decides the outcome. And I'm going to submit to you evidence tonight pursuant to KRS 100 that justifies under Kentucky law, the zone change that's been requested here on three different grounds. One, that it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Number two, that the existing zoning is inappropriate and the proposed zoning is appropriate. And third, that there have been significant changes that were unanticipated. I want to make clear one thing. This is not an application to locate a new landfill in Scott County. It's not an application for 179-acre landfill. It's not an application to create a new 179 acres in which to dispose of waste. This is an application to zone property from A1 to I2 for 179 acres for extraction, storing, and processing of raw materials to be used for borrow areas, drainage, and ponds for the landfill expansion within the landfill boundaries. Now, I certainly have seen publicly and throughout these proceedings that have occurred and read a lot of the comments and the concerns of folks and there's certainly lots of them. I'm sure you'll hear them tonight. I think one thing's important though, and I'm going to take you through some history here. And it came out a little bit in the staff report as presented tonight, the suggestion that this is a city landfill and that it has been a city landfill or Scott County landfill only is not accurate. Dating back 20 years, it has been...
Mr. Fire Marshal, could you close those doors for me, sir? I'm sorry about that interruption.
No, no problem. For more than 20 years, it is anticipated that this site would be used to accept waste from the community of Scott County in a convenient, close by location at low cost while also accepting waste from another, a number of other counties. That is not a new concept. I will show you that that goes back 20 years from the inception of the current ownership of this landfill. So when Mr. Kane and the staff have presented to you, this doesn't agree with the comp plan because the land use map does not show a landfill as a proposed use. I would submit to you, that's not Kentucky law. The future land use map is one element of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan involves a lot of other things, including the solid waste management plan required by statute that every county must submit every five years and that is made and approved by the county leaders. That's also a part of the comp plan. It's a background to it. It's incorporated by reference. You were shown the future land use map and it says, see, all this is agricultural, so it clearly doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan. I think if you'll go back and look at that future land use map you were shown, it doesn't show the landfill on there. It doesn't even recognize that there's a landfill there that's been there for 20 years. So again, it is not Kentucky law that you look at the land use map. If so, we wouldn't need a hearing on this. It would be very simple, short, look at the map, is it there or not? There's more to it than that. Now, as I said, and I'll apologize in advance, but I know there's probably people here who have been in Scott County their entire lives, maybe 60, 70, 80 years. There's other people that have been more recent, maybe members of the commission. I've got to take you through some history because in order to show you that this complies, the proposal complies with the county and city plan, I've got to take you back a little bit. I'm going to go quickly here at the beginning. That gives you an idea of the site. You can see it up there in red. Joe has covered a lot of this, so no need for me to review the basics of where the site is and so on. There is the property that is subject to rezoning. Now, what's outlined in yellow is about 500 acres. That's owned by Waste Management Realty. The area that's proposed for rezoning is what you see there in the white area of contours of about 179 acres. And the purpose of that is to have extraction of clay to use as borrowing fill on the landfill site, to have two sediment ponds, and to be able to have a buffer area around that, even beyond the buffer area that's on the remainder of that 500 acres. That's the development plan that was submitted to you. You've got that. There's a diagram that shows a little more detail on what's there and what's proposed in terms of the zone change. First, you can see that that zone change area again is off to the right, kind of bending around that corner of about 179 acres. 69 acres of that is what is proposed to be, have any disturbance. The remaining 110 acres is buffer and it's to remain undisturbed. That's part of our requirements for a landfill is that there's substantial buffer requirements that have to exist. So that's why you see that included, you know, stormwater drainage, the sediment ponds, the borrow and fill areas. Now, if you look up at the top of that map, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit, start a little history here. The old city landfill was up there on the top in what says 2014 acquisition, and it's got three phases that were in it. That was closed. The reason it was acquired in 2014 is when the city closed that landfill, they had leach aid problems. They had leaks, stormwater leaks that had to be remediated. It was under assessment by environmental regulators and they had to go through a process of getting that taken care of and the time has to pass, it has to be tested. That was finally completed. It was out of assessment in 2014 and then it was conveyed to Waste Services. So that is the old site. Below it is what was permitted by the city, you'll see in blue, dating back to 1998. And those are the active cells. That's where waste is disposed of now and actively being disposed of. That's in those blue cells. The area of expansion here, the area where new waste will be able to go that it couldn't go before is within the boundaries and what you see is called horizontal expansion. So that's the new expansion areas coupled with what's there. Those are the areas that can be used for disposal. The 69 acres again, that is the subject of this zone change and the 179 overall, is solely for uses that support that in terms of cover, fill, borrow. You may have heard from time to time, the landfill is asked for a 500-acre expansion or the landfill is asking for 180 acres of new landfill. I wanted to go through that with you to show you where the landfill space is and what's actually being submitted for a zone change for these adjacent areas. It includes, it includes restrictions Joe mentioned to you. These were restrictions that were not just promises or pledges. These were restrictions that become part of the zoning. They go along with what I just described. No waste or refuse can be put on this property that's being rezoned. It can't be used for that. It can only be used for extraction, storing, processing, and minerals, raw material to be used for those borrow areas. The other important thing about that is, is I2, there are other uses that might not be appropriate there that are permitted in the I2 zone. By limiting it to this use only, you don't have to be concerned about these other potential uses. Again, one of the issues that was raised during the public hearings on this over the last year was the concern about having, there's a rail spur there. We're going to have trash hauled in here by rail and we don't want trash trains coming in here to deliver trash. Well, we took heed to that and said, if that's a concern, we'll commit, we won't use the rail service for that. Another main issue, as you all have heard about, was the traffic on 25 from the southern end of Scott County all the way up to Double Culver through a lot of residential areas. Again, as part of this, all the trucks that we control, solid licensed solid waste transportation vehicles that bring waste from the regional transfer center are shifted to access from I-75, exit 136 at Porter Road and make about a two and a half stretch, two and a half mile stretch down 25 and over Double Culver to the entrance. Now, the history. This is the 1991 comprehensive plan. Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission, March 14th of 1991. So we're talking about 27 years ago. And I think you're going to see some issues here that might sound familiar. Landfills. Scott Countyans are fortunate to have a well-managed and controlled landfill owned by the city of Georgetown. However, the life of the landfill is limited and new state regulations are likely to greatly add to the cost of future waste disposal. City-owned landfill will reach full capacity in two to three years. A 100-acre area adjacent to the landfill has been designated for future expansion. New regulations will take effect in 1992. Tipping fees are expected to increase greatly. And it goes down and says the city's proposing two new landfill facilities. One of those was for construction debris and the other for household waste or contained landfill. Now, again, from the 1991 comprehensive plan, there was a survey done about what the most important issues are. Scott Countyans believe that illegal dumping is a serious problem. Illegal dumps were ranked as the second highest environmental concern on the Rural Property Owners Survey, the top concern of the Wilkerson Survey. If you go over here and look at solid waste management, what was the planning commission, the joint planning commission, saying at that point? Challenge of reducing the stream of waste we produce and the high cost of safely disposing of what remains is a critical growth issue for Scott County. The city, through its landfill planning, the Scott Fiscal Court, the solid waste management ordinance have supported responsible plan, yet Scott counties are, Scott Countyans are signaling that a stronger program is needed. They rank a clean place without junk or roadside dumps as the single most important attribute of a quality community. Read at the bottom. City and county government must work closely together and with other counties in the region if we are to establish a financially feasible landfill. Control illegal dumping and coordinate waste collection, recycling, and educational efforts. New regulations for landfills may make solid waste disposal our most costly utility bill in the future and regional landfills may be a more cost-effective solution. Recycling also will be most effective at the regional level. Solid waste management will require a full-time effort and a strong local government committee with, commitment within the next five years. Need for regional planning. Because of the increased cost of future landfilling, a regional landfill may be the only cost-effective alternative. It's essential to have a study made of the projected cost of future tipping fees and service to keep these costs reasonable. Regional landfill would spread the cost of solid waste management over several counties. Goes on and talks about the cost of closing the landfill. That was in 1991 when this county was a lot smaller and the city was a lot smaller and they were starting to deal with these issues. What they said in the comprehensive plan was that there are two options. Participation in a major regional facility that combines landfilling or acceptance of out-of-county waste at the landfill. Currently, the landfill does not accept out-of-county waste except mid-way sewer sludge and waste from private molars on the county line. Scott County is a good location for a major regional facility due to its geology and transportation access. However, there's little, very little support for accepting out-of-county wastes. In 1991, if the new facility were planned as a regional facility, the resulting protests would likely delay permit approval and increase application costs. Additional waste streams or participation in a regional facility elsewhere may need to be considered after Scott County residents begin to experience an increased disposal cost necessary to support the new facilities. Goes on and talks about location. Future landfills meet locational criteria for adequate traffic and heavy truck access, suitable geology, remoteness from areas with an existing or planned concentration of population, and visual screening. The landfill sighting study for the city of Georgetown is an example of the type of criteria that should be met. That's the landfill sighting for where the city of Georgetown landfill was on Double Culver Road. Goals and objectives address these strategies. Again, this is 1991. Fast forward six years, 1997. Scott County Fiscal Court held its regularly scheduled meeting. Present were the judge and the commissioner. If you go on down, Judge Lusby welcomed the mayor and the council persons present for the discussion on the host agreement having to do with the solid waste plan. Now, host agreement is a concept of Kentucky statute where a county has an agreement with a private disposal company to accept waste from other counties that it then charges a fee on as it's hosting that landfill of that private owner. Let's see what the discussion was. Again, we are in 1997, guess 21 years ago, a little under, about 20 years ago. The fee would bring revenue into the county from outside to let some of the cost we have. Scott County pays approximately 139,000 annually for all our outside waste programs. Goes on and describes what those are. If we charge a host fee, we will be able to offset some of these costs that would in turn save the county and city money. If we had a host agreement, instead of the city paying half of the countywide cleanup, you could take the money out of that fee. Instead of paying the cost of the recycling, if enough money were generated, the city and county could host save money. It would cost the people in Georgetown money as stated in the council meeting and it would not cost them money. Instead, it would save them money. Another topic at the council meeting was the great amount of money the county would generate. From the figures received by Mr. Wade, it takes 400 tons per day to break even. The city of Georgetown generates 28 tons. The whole county probably generates 80 tons. If you round this to 100 tons a day, that leaves you with 300 tons coming from outside the county. If you charge 50 cents per ton, that's 38,000 per year. If you charge 6.25%, it's 112,000 a year. Judge Lusby said that it would be his thought, unless there's some reason that he does not understand, the county should generate some money from out-of-county people. They are going to be filling up the land space. This is if the city sells the landfill. If you keep it, you should get every penny you can. Commissioner Rankin stated, we have used the local taxpayer money to prevent the overfill of the landfill. Now we should charge for out-of-county waste that's going to fill it up. Judge Lusby made a motion to enter into a host agreement for 6.25% on out-of-county waste if the landfill is leased or sold. Commissioner Isaac seconded the motion. Court votes unanimous. Scott County Fiscal Court. In 1998, the city undertook an RFP to sell the landfill. All of these issues were wrapped up into it. What's the county going to charge? What's the county going to get? What's the city going to get? Who's it going to be sold to? What are the terms? One of the bidders asked questions of the city and here's a response to one of those bidders. The city is willing to accept waste streams generated in Scott and Fayette Counties as well as the counties immediately adjacent to those. Those can... Those contiguous counties are Franklin Woodford, Jessman Madison, Clark, Bourbon, Harrison, Grant, and Owen. Additional waste streams may be proposed, but with no guarantee they will be approved." This is what was being said to bidders when the city's trying to sell its landfill, create this host agreement with the county for somebody to come in and take this over. Here's the service areas. "City desires a stable, long-term, cost-effective waste disposal site for its citizen." Long-term means in excess of 20 years. This is now the objectives for the deal that they're negotiating with WSB, Waste Services, who ultimately bought it. Guaranteed 20 years of disposal capacity. City will always have the lowest rate charged. Additionally, an operating landfill close to the city limits will reduce transportation costs, thus increasing cost effectiveness for the city." This is in 1998, 1997, prior to the sale, 1998. Says, "The city foresees this venture as a source of income to the city and seeks to maximize that." "City desires that waste generated outside the Commonwealth not be accepted. The city will cooperate with the operator to obtain approval for waste sources located in the Commonwealth." Now, in 1998, December of 98, prior to Waste Services buying the landfill, they took the permit, went to the state, because if you're gonna add additional sources, you have to have those approved. In anticipation of buying the landfill, and based on all these discussions, they add the waste sources. Now, there's what was existing at the time. Bourbon, Fayette, Franklin, Grant, Harrison, Owen, Scott, Woodford. These were added. You can see Anderson, Boone, so on, down through the page. This was prior to the purchase. Here's the resolution that approved the solid waste management plan in 1999. This is two months before the contract was signed to sell the landfill to Waste Services. You can go down to the bottom and say that the solid waste management plan is being updated to reflect new ownership of the existing landfill and authorizing additional capacity of 6 million tons over 10 years. Additional capacity. Here's the agreement for purchase. April 1st of 1999. Waste Services, based on all of this, buys the landfill. Here's some language. "In the event that WSB provides notice to the city of its desire to expand the horizontal or vertical extent of the existing waste footprint beyond that permitted, the city covenants it shall use its best efforts to assist Waste Services in obtaining any necessary permit modification or other approval, as are necessary to accomplish such expansion. If necessary, the city will assist Waste Services in its application for the revision of the Scott County Solid Waste Management Plan and any zoning approvals which may be necessary." That was in a contract the council authorized in 1999 when they sold the landfill. On the same day, the host agreement is executed, not with the city, but with the county. April 1st of 1999. You'll see it's signed by the mayor. It's signed by the fiscal court. Again, in December of 2001, there's an application that adds additional counties so that the total sources are then set. Started operating, the new landfill started operating under control of Waste Services in 2002.
You might back it up one more slide so I have probably keeping up with them.
Okay. Thank you. So, here's the 2003 Solid Waste Management Plan. As I mentioned to you, Solid Waste Management Plan is required to be adopted by counties, by Kentucky law, addresses a number of waste issues. It's required, that was part of the new law that was talked about back in that 1991 document. Here's what the fiscal court approved and submitted to the state Division of Waste Management. Total capacity authorized, 3.67 million tons existing in 1999, 6 million tons authorized in 2001. Total capacity authorized, 9.67 million tons. 2008, five years later, another new waste management plan. Total capacity authorized, 9.67 million tons. 2013, five years later, Solid Waste Management Plan, 9.67 million tons. It notes, "The Central Kentucky Contained Landfill opened in 2002. In May of 2012, Central Kentucky submitted a notice of intent and request for consistency determination. Proposes to expand the landfill facility for 10 years with 3.9 million tons and airspace volume of 5.2 million." This is the very initial notice that's sent out when you're exploring potential expansion. The notice of intent was determined to be consistent with the county's solid waste management plan because the requested amount is included in the current authorized amount. That's in 2012. Now, you may have heard Mr. Kane mention, there was a lot based on this anticipated growth out there. You heard me mention the leachate issue that existed on the old city landfill. Well, one of the things that happened was a sewer line was run out there. All the leachate that just pumped through that, also, number one, Waste Services pays a fee to the county for that. Number two, it ended up also allowing them to provide a pumping station to serve Sadyville. Reduced the cost significantly. All this was done, if you look, the cost of the project was $3.06 million. That's in 2011. That was done based on the anticipation of this landfill going forward. Here's the newspaper article, or portion of it, from May 15th, 2012. "Fiscal Court Approves First Step in Proposed Landfill Expansion Project." Ran in the Georgetown News-Graffit. Says, "Fiscal Court approved a resolution Friday which says the plan to expand the Central Kentucky landfill on Double Culver Road is consistent with a pre-existing county plan." That was the fiscal court's determination in 2012. Goes on and describes what happened, the process for that. Now, we're up through 2012. The county has looked at the expansion proposed, said it agrees with our solid waste management plan. Votes on that unanimously. We submit the application. The application starts working through the process, the Division of Waste Management in Frankfurt. One of the things that was required was to get a zoning compliance letter. Here's the planning and zoning compliance. Now, this was not some, hey, we may expand in the future. It was, we have a permit that we're submitting to Kentucky Division of Waste Management. We need to certify to them that it complies with zoning. Here's our planning and zoning compliance. That was August of 13. Toyota then announces in 2014 that it is undertaking a major new initiative, the first one in the world for Toyota, where they will use landfill gas from this landfill as it expands to generate electricity. There will be a methane collection system that is highly complex, captures 95% of methane that would otherwise go into the atmosphere and have to be otherwise collected. Toyota is going to build, builds a generator to generate electricity from that landfill gas. And on top of that, they need to somehow get that electricity from out there at the landfill where the gas is to their facility, which is six and a half miles south. So, what did they do? They went out and bought the property rights, got easements from all the owners required to install underground transmission lines. Now, I've done some work for KU over the years. Those used to run about a million dollars a mile to run underground transmission. It's more than that now. That was installed, all based on electricity production from this landfill. And Toyota was looking at the same thing we were when we bought the landfill and when we looked at every year's solid waste management plan approved by the fiscal court. 9.6 million cubic yard, or ton, 9.6 million tons of capacity authorized. Here's one of the things they published about how they would run this. It shows the transmission lines underground. Mr. Atkins ran an article, "From Trash to Treasure," November 17th, 2015. "The company will begin burning landfill methane to generate electricity to assemble about 10,000 cars a year." That is from what is out there now. Absher said, "The company hopes to eventually increase power production at the landfill to 10 megawatts an hour." That's 10 times what's out there now. And again, there is no methane after you close the landfill. And about six months later, if you're not putting anything in there, there's no methane. There's no gas, there's no electricity. And if you say, "We're done, we're not gonna approve this expansion that's been in the works for all these years and no methane wells go in there and no methane's collected," their project just sits there. There's a map of the six and a half miles they took to get easements and build an underground transmission line, based on all of the things you've seen about the history of what was anticipated for this landfill and its capacity and its service of out-of-county. Then, in December of 2015, a new host community agreement was entered into. New host agreement. Now, this is just over two years ago. The fiscal court acting. Talks about the host agreement. It says, "Phase one, this is the currently permitted tonnage airspace of approximately, of which approximately 1,620,225 tons remain right now, July 15." Phase two, this is the permitting process. Waste Services has initiated for expansion of an additional 6.8 million tons of airspace. Okay, remember that. That's phase two, is what you're hearing about tonight in what was authorized by the city, I mean by the county, in its solid waste management plan and now is being referenced in the host agreement they entered into. Phase three is not on the table. It is in the future. If there is a future permitting process at some point, that has not been authorized in the solid waste management plan. It would require the county to act, it would require zoning to act, and it would require a whole new permit application somewhere in the future. So, what do they say? They're gonna set the fees for this. Beginning on December 16th, here's the fee of 50 cents per ton on all solid waste. That's until phase one airspace is exhausted. So, the county knows, we're gonna run into a period here where it's exhausted, this existing airspace. Beginning when phase two is accepting solid waste, that is this current expansion that the county had authorized. Beginning when phase two is accepting solid waste, Waste Services shall pay the sum of $1 per ton regardless of origin disposed landfill. And then it treats phase three differently because that's not in the works. It says, "Should phase three be approved by all necessary governmental agencies and other entities, then upon acceptance, they'll pay $1. Now, this permitting process that Waste Services went through with this, remember I told you, one of the first things they had to do was come to the county and say, "We're looking for expansion. You've gotta tell us this is in compliance with the solid waste management plan." And the county did that, saw the resolution. This is what Waste, this is what the Department for Environmental Protection, Division of Waste Management has on their website. They're telling people, as it starts, "So, you wanna build a landfill? Here's what you're looking at. Go down there at the bottom, talks about different kinds of landfills. The first category is a contained landfill. Accepts municipal solid waste. Will cost in the neighborhood of $750,000 to $1.2 million for the application. This includes the design engineer's cost and the permitting fees. A contained landfill will cost in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $250,000 per acre to construct a liner system and cap." And it goes on and talks about the owner's charge, 30 to 35 to recoup that. I point this out to you because I want you to remember, Waste Services, from the time they bought this landfill, it was represented that there was gonna be this expansion capacity. It was represented that these counties would be the service area. That stayed in the solid waste management plan five years, after five years, after five years. Before, at the very inception of this process that they talk about costing $750,000, they'd go to the county and say, "We have to ask you whether this is, this complies with what's in the solid waste management plan." And you saw the resolution. The city authorized it, found that it was, the city acknowledged that it complied because it was consistent with the waste management. That's the kind of reliance. This wasn't that Waste Services showed up in 2012 and said, "You know what? We've decided we're gonna change this whole landfill thing and we're gonna expand it and start taking all kinds of county's waste." That had been from the outset what was anticipated. And I've shown you that through all those public records. December 16th of 2016, I showed you, we had the zoning letter from, from Mr. Smith, all that submitted. The application materials for this permit, I had Mr. Wade bring them to my office so I could look over them. They are multiple binders that fill up several banker's boxes. That's what the application process is. They issue the draft permit. After this process, it started in December 12, we're now in December 16 and the draft permit is issued. Then we get the letter. There's a 30-day review period for comment. On the 30th day, Mr. Kane sends the letter that you've heard about and we're not gonna beat it in the ground today because that's for another time and place. And frankly, we're here because of this letter. He said, "However you may have construed Earl Smith's letter, you don't have the zoning you need for this expansion." That was in January of last year. He says, "It's my determination that the horizontal expansion proposed in the current application is an expansion of non-conforming use, et cetera. This would require a rezoning of the property to light industrial with conditional use or heavy industrial for the entire area of the proposed landfill expansion, including ancillary sedimentation ponds, borrow areas where structure and operation are proposed. Thus, this application for the 179 acres that contains 69 acres of disturbance to facilitate the landfill, the zone change that we were advised that we would have to seek." Now, go back to what I started with. Number one reason that they are entitled to a zone change and that is justified under Kentucky law is because it complies with the Comprehensive Plan. I've taken you through the history of both the city and the county's plans dating back to 1998, if not 1991, when they first started ruminating about these issues. But one thing ought to be real clear. When Waste Management came in in 1999 and had people like Rumkey and BFI and others who were interested in doing the same thing, all this was represented, all this was laid out, all this was in writing and approved and authorized, so it's not something that came about later. This concept of out-of-county waste is not a 2016 or 2018 issue. It was a 1998 issue prior to them signing and investing millions upon millions of dollars, prior to Toyota investing millions and millions of dollars. So, I wanna now show you, when we talk about landfills and this kinda gives you some context. I'm sure some people disagree with decisions that have been made over the last 20 years about whether we should've had a landfill at all. Maybe we should've just shipped it off to some other county and paid whatever it cost. Well, you heard Joe Kane. Have you heard what?
Come on, guys. Show him a little respect now. He has the right to present his application. Let's let him present his application. Let's show some respect.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things you heard about, and Mr. Kane presented in his staff report again tonight, is the consolidation of landfills. It used to be that there were county or city landfills in all kinds of places, small municipal. With environmental regulations that went into place in 1992, most cities and counties couldn't, couldn't operate a landfill, they sure couldn't build one and continue to operate it and then close it, because the costs were exorbitant. So what happened was you started to see them close down. And what you started to see were private companies who had the wherewithal and could collect enough economy of scale, where they could bring in the waste and do it in a way that was cost-effective. And that's why you see, I think Mr. Kane mentioned it in his staff report, that the change, the number of landfills has been reduced dramatically, 75% it's decreased. It doesn't mean landfills went away. Landfills are still there, they've just become more regional in nature. It may be kind of hard to see this, but I'm going to show you where some of the landfills are around here, so that you can see, number one, what are your other areas that you could go to if you weren't using your own landfill, but number two, what the size and scope of those landfills are. Because you've heard from Mr. Kane and others, things like, "This is a major landfill, this is a huge landfill, this is a huge expansion." Some people say a mega landfill. Well, let's look at some of the other ones. That red line is 100 miles, there's a blue line there that's 50 miles, and there's a short line you can barely see that's about 25 miles. Grant County, there's one that's nearby, not too far away. That's Epperson, that's owned by Republic, permitted for about 11.9 million cubic yards. It's filled with 10.6. So we'll close, should close in the next two years or less. There's your nearest choice. Here's Pendleton, Pendleton County, as you can see, also just a little bit. Pendleton County's owned by Rumke, that's a 15 million cubic yard landfill. Boone County, that's Bavarian Waste, 17.7 million cubic yards. If you look, I put these aerials up here because I want you to look at kind of what these look like, what's around them, what kind of areas you see them. Franklin County, that's owned by Republic, that's Benson Valley, 21.3 million cubic yards, that's what their permitted size is. Montgomery County, that's a Rumke landfill, 11.9 million cubic yards, it's filled 5.1 Brown County, 10.6 million, filled 3.1. Now again, we're just working our way around here and going further out, because if the waste from Scott County isn't going in Scott County, it's going to be hauled, and it's going to be paid for to be hauled. And it's going to be paid for where it goes, because the person putting in the landfill's going to charge the same fees and remit to their county, host agreement fees, just like happens here. There's Estill County, Blue Ridge, 7.3 permitted, 4.3 filled. Lincoln County, 33 million, 7.9 filled. Laurel County in London, 19.8 million is that one, owned by Waste Connections. There's one in Nelson County that is not private. That is the Nelson County Public Landfill, it's permitted for 2.5 million cubic yards, it's filled with 1.7. These are, these are a year-old numbers, because the last reports came out in the spring of 2017, remaining less than a million cubic yards. So we've worked around, now here's Jefferson, you can send it to Jefferson, there's a landfill. Outer Loop Landfill, 72.8 million permitted, 20.5 million filled. Again, the surroundings, I want you to take note of these. There's Tremble County, Republic, 33 million cubic yards, 13 filled, 20 remaining. Now, Scott County. There's a Central Kentucky landfill, under the existing permit, from when the time it was acquired from the city, 3.9 million cubic yards, filled with 2.3. These are approximate numbers on all these, as close as we can get, remaining 1.6 million. Now, Mr. Kane said something that I think, I'm sure he was honestly believed, but it's just not so, and that is that a million cubic yards is equivalent to a million tons. I think anybody that operates in this area will tell you that's not the case. Trash is compacted, and what you get is in a compaction, depending on the rate, usually a rule of thumb is about 0.75 of a cubic yard is a cubic ton. So it's not a one-to-one comparison, and you won't find that anywhere. So that's why I've shown you here what the remaining amounts are in tons, just so you can kind of make that conversion. Not yet, ma'am, but at the end we can. So here is, this is an important point, because Mr. Kane seemed to have some question in his staff report about, there's 9.6 million authorized, and this is another 9.2, it looks like, not sub. With the expansion permit, per the draft permit issued, the total permitted airspace is 11.1 million cubic yards, that's 8.3 million tons. It's already filled with 2.3. It creates about 6.6 million tons of additional capacity, all on the landfill property, all on the existing 100 acres where the landfill is. Now, remember I showed you that solid waste management plan over and over again, showed you what the authorization was? 9.6 million tons. We're talking about permitted here, 8.3 million. Now, again, just to give you some idea of where this falls in the scope of these regional landfills, this is listed by permitted airspace. You can see where the Central Kentucky landfill is on that, that is as it's existing under its permit. It's the blue. So if you look at the top, there's with the expansion permit, is it goes from the current, 3.8 permitted, 2.2 filled, this is cubic yards, 1.6 remaining, to 11 permitted, 2.2 filled, 8 remaining. That's without building a new landfill, that is without building a new landfill site, that is without putting any waste outside the site that you already have as a landfill, and is within the 9.6 million authorized by the county Waste Management Plan back to the 1998. Here's how that list changes with the expansion, as we move up, you'll see Montgomery County's still bigger, Pendleton County, Bavarian, at Boone County, Laurel, Franklin, Tremble, I'm not sure why that's not showing up. This shows you the, this is that same map I was using earlier, it doesn't show up here, but it shows you what the capacities are in those various sites. Ours is 11.1. Those are those other sites I was showing, I was showing you, to get an idea of the size. Ours is 11.1 with the expansion, with it, it's 11.1. You can see those sizes of the other ones in the region.
How do they compare to our population?
Here's the, here's the next one I wanted to show you, just because this kind of shows you this concept of consolidation that's going on with these private landfills. You can see the Republic landfills, and you can see the Rumke landfills. Waste Management is right in the middle of those. You better believe, you better believe, they love for Waste Services not to operate. Toyota, I told you about that landfill of gas project, I showed you some of the info, the information they provided. This shows what they, what they put into this. 33 easements, six and a half miles, buried line. Here's their future landfill gas, that they're planning on occurring out to 2025, and how much electricity it'll generate for Toyota so they can build cars. Landfill closing effect. Next, nearest open landfill, Mount Sterling or Walton, 33 or 43 miles away. Talks about their average loads per month. Here's their strategy right now with the landfill that they had planned on when they installed transmission lines and their methane collection and generation facilities, is that by 2025, they would reduce their CO2 emissions by seven and a half, by 43% at a cost of $7.5 million. They would use these other methods to reduce other sources, without, without that landfill. Total reduction ends up costing them $60 million, excuse me, it was $60 million under that plan, without it, if you look down at the bottom, $120 million. That's if the landfill's closed. And that was what they had invested in. So, as I stated at the outset, KRS-100, as Mr. Kane told you, lists three different ways that there's a zone change. Number one is, does it agree with the comprehensive plan? Does it agree with the community planning as documented over the past however long? In this case, I've shown you 20 years of community planning. Going back to 1991, when you first heard about that plan, the solid waste management plan since 2002, the city and county agreements I've shown, the host agreements that have been approved by the fiscal court reflecting this expansion and entered into with Waste Mr. Kane talked about environmentally sensitive areas, those are identified in the comprehensive plan. This is not located in the watersheds of Royal Springs, not located in the watershed potential reservoir that's always been identified, not located in what's been identified as an environmentally sensitive area. And of course, it is adjacent, this 179 acres is before you make, is immediately adjacent to an active landfill. What does the comp plan say about landfills? I'll tell you, I've gone back to 1991 to see anything I could find about landfills. You saw what I showed you in the '91 plan, there has not been one word in one comprehensive plan in the last 25 years that has said, "We need to reduce that landfill out there, we need to curtail it, we need to start planning to shut it down, we need to not allow for its expansion, we need to go back and dial back what we authorized as the capacity." That's never been in the comprehensive plan that we're entitled to rely on. Here's what the comprehensive plan says, "Reduce amount of waste disposal in the landfill and illegal dumping, encourage recycling, require the proper use, location, disposal, et cetera." There are some other things in the new comp plan that show you environmentally sensitive lands. You'll note, that's not one. Rural Preserve, it shows the WMA. The WMA that is, was identified in the staff presentation as being adjacent to the subject property, that's not the case, it's adjacent to the 500 acres, it's 330 acres away from any disturbance area at all, all wooded. And the WMA, of course, was bought by the Commonwealth shortly after we bought our 500 acres, after we bought ours. We've been in discussions with them about the ability to use some of that excess property we'll have, and if you don't think the Commonwealth of Kentucky would let you know if they were worried about this being next to their WMA, imagine they would. They're not shy about letting you know. Then you look at things like soils that are appropriate, look at the heavy clay up in this area, you've got geology, are there landfills or sinkholes in the area? None, none identified, all that harsh topography's in the southern half. So you go back to this proposal, it's 179 acres, 70 acres of which is for disturbance, all the waste stays on the landfill site. I've mentioned a couple things in the staff report, and I've already touched on them, so I won't, I won't beat those in the ground, but again, the idea that the comp plan is the land use map is not Kentucky law. This information that was in the staff report that was presented, suggesting that there was 9.6 million tons authorized to date, and at the bottom, there would be an additional 9.2 million of a capacity on top of that, not the case. I've shown you that. Here's the agencies that regulate an operation like this. Because a planning commission, and I serve on a planning commission, and I know, and I can tell from you tonight, sometimes it's not the most fun job, but what you don't have to do is go figure out every environmental law that applies and how it applies in a specific setting, all of these agencies have to approve this permit, all of them. And they have continuing jurisdiction over this permit, and all the activities there, at the state and the federal level. Again, in addition to the comp plan that's being consistent with 20 years of planning, you also have that the existing zoning is inappropriate. That land has never been used in recent history for agricultural purposes, it's heavily wooded, it is immediately adjacent to a landfill, it's not suitable for farming, it's not been farmed. It has the appropriate geology and soils to accommodate the very kind of borrow and drainage you need for a landfill. And again, with the repeated anticipation over the years of this expansion, how could there be any other spot in the county that is more suited than the one immediately adjacent? It has the proper soils and geology, and should be zoned to allow for that additional use. Have there been changes since the comprehensive plan? Well, as Joe said, while your comprehensive plan hasn't yet been adopted by the legislative bodies, the most recent one that I know you've worked on, Art, the last couple of years, we've gone through a number of comprehensive plans, and as I said, none of them ever suggested that this expansion was no longer what was envisioned. The current plan, just adopted, doesn't talk about it. Doesn't say anything about, "We no longer want to expand this, we no longer want out-of-county waste." None of that is in the county-city planning document. The unanticipated change since the last comprehensive plan was when we got a letter that said, "Hey, you can't do this anticipated expansion without rezoning, and thus, we're here requesting the rezoning, because the anticipated use, this anticipated expansion, is not appropriate on that adjacent property without a zone change." Again, that's what we talked about, is the reliance all these years, city, the county, dating back to 1998, the owner, Waste Services, in buying this, developing it, spending millions of dollars, man-hours, Toyota, the Division of Waste Management that's processed this application, all anticipated this expansion. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say that I, I'm going to conclude my presentation at this point, and I want to thank, I want to thank the planning commission members for your attention. I trust you understand the seriousness of this, not just to the applicant, not just to the applicant, but to the others that have invested and relied on this. We've prepared proposed findings and justifications that we would tender to you for your consideration to approve, this is a zone change, being consistent with KRS-100. Brought a copy of the application, or excuse me, the presentation that I'm going to give to Mr. Kane, just to put in the record, and I'll pass these out to you and just let you pass them down, and I would ask respectfully that those tendered justifications be considered. And to the vast majority of the audience, I appreciate their patience and their attention and their respect. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions now or later if you'd like.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to Republic in a minute. Best thing still doesn't work.
Oh, there we went.
Can y'all hear me? Does anyone on the commission have a question? Mr. Royce? At this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I think we have a couple of attorneys for citizens, which if...
Mr. Chairman, you might pay attention to your stenographer.
She needs a timeout.
I, I think at this time will take us a five or ten minute break. We've got a couple people need to take a break. So we'll take a break real quick.
Well, you gotta hit it on the table.
Hello, hello, hello? Can you hear me? Doesn't work. Doesn't work, Steve. Let's sing a song. Hello. Hello. Maybe we need to find, wait until we find out if it works.
You're gonna die if you can't tell right then.
If we could calm down. If we could calm down, we're gonna get started again. We're gonna start with an attorney, one of the citizens' attorneys. If you come up and state your name.
You said something about attorneys for any city?
No, the citizens' attorneys. There's a microphone up there, if you could speak into it, please.
Okay, we got it on.
Attach it to your microphone. Are you, are you with him? Did y'all get them? Mr. Royce, a copy of it. Mr. Royce?
Good evening. My name is Steve Porter. I'm an attorney from Louisville, but I represent many clients in other counties. And I spend most of my time, probably ninety-five percent of it, representing neighbors.
Hey, can't hear you. Clip it under your tie or your lapel.
Well, put it up here.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you. Tonight, I'm pleased to represent a group of at least about twenty-five residents who have, that I've been meeting with over the last years and more. But those people are representing the views of hundreds, if not more, citizens of Scott County who have attended hearings before the Division of Waste Management and here for adjustment and others. And I think you can see behind me probably a lot of those people. Because I think most of the people in this audience tonight are people here opposed to this rezoning. Some of my clients actually live on Double Culvert Road. Some live off US-25. Some live in areas near there or have family who live in the area in this neighborhood. These are people who experience on a constant basis the horrible gagging smells and the unending dangerous traffic on these roads and in the neighborhood. Now, you've heard a little history, but let me give you a little bit more, a little bit different take. I know you're familiar with the old City of Georgetown dump. That was originally a fifty-seven acre parcel that is now full and closed. In addition, that dump included a one hundred and two acre parcel where there is now an active landfill that Waste Services of the Bluegrass has operated. Forty-six acres of that is disposal area. They're proposing to make the whole hundred and two acres a disposal area. That's another question about an expansion of the non-conforming use, but we're not going to get into that tonight. That hundred and fifty-nine acres is a pre-existing, non-conforming use on land that is zoned A1 agriculture. In other words, except for the fact that it was existing and done by the City of Georgetown many years ago, it would be an illegal use according to your comprehensive plan because it would not have the proper zoning. The city had the right to use it, and they passed that on to Waste Services of the Bluegrass. The 1991 comprehensive plan acknowledged the old dump of fifty-seven acres. And in that plan said, there should be a possible expansion onto a hundred and two more adjacent acres. But nothing more. They didn't say anything at all about expanding beyond the fifty-seven of the old dump, plus the hundred and two that are now being used by Waste Services of the Bluegrass. Waste Services bought the hundred and two acres in 1999, and then, as now Mr. Royce said, the fifty-seven later came to them in 2014. In addition, another company, Waste Services Realty, a separate company, and they're the applicant in this case, and the owner of the land, purchased five hundred adjacent acres in 2010. That is the land where the change in zoning is being contemplated. We're not talking about a change in zoning on the one hundred and two acres. It has, at least limited, and that's maybe a debate, but it has the non-conforming use, pre-existing. It's this new land that they're asking to be rezoned. And they're asking for a hundred and seventy-nine acres of that now. And you can imagine what might ask for in the future. So contrary to what Mr. Royce told you at the workshop meeting on Monday, Waste Services could not have purchased the five hundred acres in 2010 thinking they had full permission to operate a mining or landfill operation without any zoning change. Remember the question somebody asked? Why did you buy that five hundred? He said, the Earl Smith letter gave them that permission. They bought it in 2010. The Earl Smith letter wasn't until 2013. So that didn't exist then, in 2010 when they bought it. They bought it as a speculative thinking that they would, down the road, get a zoning change for that land and be able to use it. They had no idea at that point, or shouldn't have had any idea other than in their own minds that somebody was going to tell them, "Oh, yeah, you can expand." But Earl Smith didn't even say that they could expand beyond the hundred and two. He basically said in his report that they can expand on, on the hundred and two and not be on, on the existing property. In its justification letter attached to its zoning application, Waste Services Realty stated this. When the current comprehensive plan was adopted, it was the position of the zoning enforcement official that non-waste containment activities could be conducted in conjunction with the landfill on adjacent property owned by Waste Services and zoned A1, thus not requiring any different zoning designation. So what he's telling you is that in 1991, when the current comprehensive plan was adopted, and any changes that have occurred since then, that there was a position of the zoning enforcement official that they could go on beyond that. That's just not the case. 1991, Earl Smith didn't write any kind of a letter like that. And actually, his letter, again, was very limited. So in addition to the fact that the Smith letter was twenty-two years after the adoption, the original adoption of the comprehensive plan, and three years after Waste Services Realty purchased its five hundred acres, his letter clearly stated, quote, "Expansion of the landfill within the current property boundary does not conflict with Scott County planning and zoning ordinances." That is the hundred and two acres. That was the current property boundary of this landfill in two, in 2013, when Earl Smith wrote that letter. So his letter doesn't even go to the point where Mr. Royce has argued. It didn't give permission to expand to the five hundred acres or even a hundred and seventy-nine acres of that five hundred. It only said, "Expansion within the current property boundary." Then, in 2017, Mr. Kane, very rightfully, made a expansion of that whole opinion and came up with a series of conclusions as to what is permissible. And he basically said, that in this part, we agree with, that they need to get a rezoning of the one hundred, of the, excuse me, of the five hundred acres, or any portion of the five hundred acres, need to get a rezoning of that in order to mine clay. Because that is a mineral. They're going to dig down twenty, thirty, forty feet into the ground and mine clay and reduce all the hilltops and the ridges and everything to a flat land out there, just like you see in a strip mine. And in 2017, the Scott County Board of Adjustment made it clear that the proposed mining of clay on the hundred and seventy-nine or the five hundred, doesn't matter, was a heavy industrial use that required I-2 zoning, which is now what they have claimed. At that time, they claimed that just digging dirt was an agricultural use, even digging down forty feet into the ground. Never heard of a farmer, or a timber guy, or anybody else digging down dirt forty feet and totally leveling ridges. Although Waste Services Realty disagreed with that ruling and has appealed to Circuit Court, it has nevertheless applied for this zone change, which I think they should have done a long time ago. For the record, we believe Waste Services Realty has not provided you with sufficient information in its application or in its testimony tonight to justify their request. That's a decision you must make. All you have heard is some conclusions from their attorney. Not any evidence, not any real testimony. And in their application, and even their supplemental application, they did not present that either. So we've got questions for this commission. And this gets to the Kentucky statute. Because there are basically three, three ways that you can get an approval for a zoning change if you agree, if the commission and later the fiscal court agrees to it. First, does the application for rezoning comply with the Georgetown-Scott County comprehensive plan? Does it agree with the current plan? Current plan says this is A1. It's agricultural. That's what it's been zoned forever and ever and ever. And I don't know how anybody can say that it complies with the current plan. Because the current plan has not been amended. The solid waste management plans are not amendments to a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan can only be amended by a process that's set up in the statute. And the statute says that process begins with the Planning Commission. And I'm here to say, and everybody that's on this commission probably knows, anybody, and Joe's been around long enough, those solid waste management plans were never proposed to this commission, never approved by this commission, never, never consulted with this commission, never any recommendations from this commission to say, "We agree with this solid waste management plan." It was done strictly by fiscal court. So, that means that is not an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Your job is to enforce the comprehensive plan. Not to enforce some host agreement or some solid waste management plan. That's somebody else's job. Your job is the comprehensive plan. And there's no place in the comprehensive plan where this expansion is said to exist. Mr. Royce says, "There's no place in the comprehensive plan where it says you shouldn't expand." Well, there's probably a whole lot of things that a comprehensive plan doesn't say. You know, imagine a million things that a comprehensive plan doesn't say. But a comprehensive plan has to say that this is, something's going to happen. Whether something should happen in the future, or that something should be important to the community. And nowhere in your comprehensive plan, since 1991, right up to and including the proposals in Great Scott, which, right now, the goals and objectives have been approved, but all the other details have not quite been approved. So you're kind of in a little limbo there. So part of it has been approved and part edited. But there's nothing from 1991 to now, even in the part of the Great Scott plan that has been adopted or maybe is soon to be adopted, that says that there should be an expansion beyond a hundred and two acres of this landfill. Nothing. There's something in there that, yes, Mr. Royce talked about language on a possible, looking at a regional landfill and everything else. Well, that was 1991 that that language came out. Has that ever happened? No. You would have had the right to begin that process, to talk about a regional landfill and amend the comprehensive plan to place a regional landfill somewhere. Might be on Double Culvert Road, might be on some other road. Might be someplace else. It might be in the next county because you worked with the next county. Obviously, you wouldn't work with Fayette County because they want to get rid of their garbage and send it to here. So your current comprehensive plan, this proposal is not in compliance. That's just pretty plain and simple, and staff report supports that also. So, going down to the next step. Is the current agricultural zoning inappropriate for the area? Look at the area around it, and he has some maps up, and we'll have some, that everything around it is agricultural. There are people with cattle, there are people with horses. There's a wildlife management area that is, you know, trees and brush and animals and everything else in there. That is what is contemplated in agricultural zones. Those kinds of things. And preservation, conservation, all of that. Not the heaviest industrial use allowable in your land development code, in your plan. So, is the current agricultural zoning inappropriate? No. Everything else around it for miles is zoned agriculture. So, then the next question you answer, is industrial zoning appropriate for the area? And again, your plan has the big green space all over there. And that on your, your land use plan has that as all remaining agriculture. You've got urban service boundaries in the cities, in Sadieville, Georgetown, Up and Down, whatever. You've got that. But, and that's where your plan says industry should go. Inside those urban service boundaries. This is industry outside the urban service boundaries, in the area that says it should be agricultural. So it is inappropriate for the area. It's not appropriate. So that takes us then to changes. And there's been some talk about changes here tonight. The requirement that the statute is that the basic character of the neighborhood has to be substantially altered because of major economic, physical, or social changes which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan. Not one of these so-called changes, the methane, the sewer, whatever, had any effect on the neighborhood. That neighborhood is still people with fences and cows and horses and children running around on their large twenty or thirty or forty or ten or whatever acre pieces of land. That didn't change. Nothing has changed. You can't say that there were changes of any major nature that weren't anticipated in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan anticipated some population increases over the years. But a population increase for a whole county doesn't necessarily mean that this neighborhood has had major changes that were unanticipated. Any of these changes were due to the landfill, not to anybody else. The sewer was because, was brought there because the landfill has leachate juice, garbage juice coming out of there that they had not prepared the landfill properly. And so it's leaking out, and we'll show some photos of that. It was leaking out, and they couldn't get rid of it the way they should. They should have contained it, and they couldn't do it because it was improperly constructed. So they brought in sewers to grab that leachate, that garbage juice, the stuff you smell when your garbage has been sitting in your can for way too long. That's, that's the garbage juice. And they brought that, the sewers there, to correct their own problem. Not to provide sewers for Sadieville or sewers for anybody else. They brought it so that they wouldn't be under constraints from EPA or the State Division of Water Management, whatever, because they were leaking garbage juice into the streams and into the soil and the waterways around the area. The electricity to Toyota? Again, how does that change anybody in the neighborhood? Again, how does that change anybody in the neighborhood? The McCalls, the Emery, all the people that live around there? Toyota getting some, a little bit of electricity, and I'll tell you, it is a very little bit compared to their total electric usage that comes there. Plus, these landfills produce methane for another twenty to twenty-five years. You could close it down today and Toyota would still get electricity from this landfill for twenty years. Maybe not as much as if you expanded it, but they continue to get some electricity. So that is a change, again, that had no effect on the neighborhood. No effect on anybody who lives out there and owns property around that area. Has some effect, a little bit, a minute effect, on Toyota, who are many miles away. Important, important citizen, Toyota. But, it's really a small thing. You can't call that a change. Next question. After you, and you know, I wish, I wish I could just stop right now and say, "Your job as planners is to enforce the comprehensive plan." And I will hope that you will say, "This doesn't meet any of those requirements in the KRS." It's not in the current plan. It's still appropriate zoning, and there haven't been any major changes that were unanticipated that have changed the neighborhood. But in case, in case you find a little wiggle room, in case you think, "Well, let's take a little further look," let's go to some next questions. Does Scott County, without it being in their comprehensive plan, does Scott County want to be the perpetual depository of the sewage sludge and garbage of Lexington and other cities and counties in Kentucky? And even Ohio, which is in, although they've said they won't take it anymore, but it's in their approval with Division of Waste Management. Is that in your comprehensive plan? No, it's not. Does Scott County want to be the home of a large regional landfill? And let's face it, it's a regional landfill right now. You know, as soon as they, at the very least, when that contract was signed with Lexington, it really became regional. It was maybe a minor regional before that, with some other counties and everything, but even before that, most of it was probably Scott County. But when they signed it with Lexington, it became a major regional landfill. Does Scott County want to be the home of a large regional landfill with a garbage mound two hundred feet or twenty stories tall? Is that in your plan? That's the tallest structure, or would be the tallest structure, in Scott County. By far, taller than anything else in this county. Taller than the highest ridge top, taller than any buildings. Twenty stories, two hundred feet tall. We'll have some examples that we'll show you up here. Does anyone really believe that this 179 acre rezoning is the end of it? There are 321 more acres. You have to know that they're gonna come back someday and go for the other 321. Maybe a hundred acres at a time, or two hundred, or whatever, but they're gonna keep coming at you, to just keep expanding, to keep expanding, and keep expanding. They didn't buy that 500 acres to just stop with the 179. Does anyone really believe that the conditions proposed by the applicant can or will be enforced? First of all, they're not even close to sufficient to make it an acceptable use in the neighborhood. But let's look at each of those, each of those conditions. You've got the, where do we find the right? Sorry, got the tabs are messed up here. There we go. First condition, is that no waste or refuse containment activity may be expanded beyond the 159 acres previously conveyed. Well, they're not gonna go beyond the 159 now, but once they get this 179 rezoned, they're gonna get the other 321 rezoned, and this 179 is a flat piece of land. Boy, is that perfect for a landfill, or what? These conditions are much easier to be amended. These are what the statutes would call binding elements. My clients in Louisville, in Bowling Green, Bond Grove, Prospect, some other areas, don't call them binding elements, they call them bending elements. They can be bent. It's a whole lot easier to come back two or three years from now and say, "Well, that condition that we agreed to a few years ago to get our zoning change, let's amend that a little bit, let's change that." That's a whole lot easier than getting a full zoning change. So, these can always be changed. "Use of the area to be rezoned shall be limited to extraction, storing, and processing." Same thing. It can always be changed down the road. "No waste or refuse may be transported to or from the landfill via rail service." You've seen their, the outline of their property. There's this little leg down at the bottom that goes right down to the railroad. Now why, why do they have that, and what does that mean? When there was a debate in Lexington in 2015 about this contract with Waste Services of Bluegrass, James Frazier was a lawyer for Waste Services. And at a hearing, he said, "Waste Services of the Bluegrass has come up with some innovative green initiatives, including trying to develop rail systems to haul waste from Fayette to Scott County." Well, they bring it in from Fayette to Scott County on that railroad that touches this 500 acres. They can bring it in from Atlanta and Charlotte and Birmingham and then places else, Knoxville, whatever, coming up from the south. Bowling Green, where I have clients. So, you know, they say that now. But in 2015, they told Lexington, "Well, we got a way, we're gonna bring it in by rail, and that'll be really good." And now they're saying, "Oh, no, we won't." And that's because they're trying to appease, they're trying to make it look like this isn't as bad as it really is being, and is going to be. Then they say, and this is the real kicker, "All licensed solid waste transportation vehicles hauling waste from the Bluegrass Regional Transfer Station shall access the landfill via I-75 exit 136 at Porton Road." That's not my road, Porter Road. Now, most of them, many of them, let's say, I can't, I don't know if it's most, fifty-fifty or whatever, get off at 129 and come up US-25, passing Mallard Point and lots of places with this narrow US-25. You all know that that's not a road that's very acceptable for these large trucks. So now they're gonna switch that problem to Sadieville, at that exit, where there's a neat proposal, a very recent plan that you all worked on for upgrading the whole Sadieville interchange and turning that into a nice commercial and historic area and everything. And so now they're gonna bring in all the sewage trucks and the garbage trucks right through that exit, and then bring them down 25, and a little bit shorter distance and coming up the other way, but still a significant distance with all these trucks coming down. So they're just switching it from one, from one place to another. And, you know, one guy's ox is gonna not get Gordon, and somebody else's ox is gonna get Gordon. So I don't see that that is any improvement. But more importantly, who's gonna enforce that?
Where are they going?
Who's gonna enforce that? It would not be a criminal offense for one of those trucks to hit off at 129 and go up 25. They could take the US-25 all the way from Lexington, and it would not be a criminal offense. Therefore, Scott County Sheriff, City of Georgetown Police, nobody, state tribers could not stop that truck and say, "Hey, you're not supposed to be here." It's not a criminal offense. It would just be a violation of the binding element or the condition of approval. Who enforces that? You all do. Joe Kane and his staff enforce that. Are you all gonna tell Joe Kane to go sit out at these? Have Matt Summers sit at one exit and he sits at the other exit and watch and see how many trucks go in and out of those two exits? And see if they violate this? No. I certainly hope you're not gonna have your competent professional staff do something like that. There is no possible way to enforce that provision. It is just in there to make it look good, to make their application look good. It is unenforceable. And the last one is that no waste or refuse will be accepted at the landfill from out-of-state sources? Well, they've already got permission in their permit with DWM to do some counties in Ohio. They say that they haven't really done very much, and I believe so, but that's, you know, that's now, that's now. What about when you got all 500 acres turned into industrial? And you've got all kinds of things changed down the road? Now, this is opening the door. Rezoning this 179 acres is opening the door to something even bigger than it is right now, and even bigger than anybody has anticipated back from 1991 until now. So these first set of questions about the cop plan is key. And like I said, I wish I could just stop and say, "Doesn't comply with the KRS 100, and therefore, this rezoning is illegal." Because remember, what you're doing here, you're not really talking about, although it's certainly in everybody's mind here, the 102 acres. You're talking about the 179 being turned into industrial. And industrial uses are very different from agricultural uses. So, but we can't stop there. So if for some reason you disagree with us on that, then the other questions face you. All of these other questions about, do you want this to be a regional facility? Do you want a 200-foot-tall structure in the middle of this nice neighborhood? Do you want, you know, do you want all this truck traffic and increased truck traffic for many more years than currently? You know, right now, they say they're gonna run out of, run out of room in four or five years. Well, I've got a whole lot of clients who say, "Boy, we wish they'd close now." And if they're closed in four or five years, we'll be happier. We'll be fairly happy if that happens. What they're doing here is extending it to 20 or 30 years, maybe. And if they went on into the next five, the rest of the 500 acres, it could even be beyond that. So do you really want this monster, this increasing monster in your county, just off US-25, and too far away from that? Just off the interstate and too far away from the interstate according to your comprehensive plan? And right on Double Culvert Road, and you will hear from some Double Culvert Road residents and property owners tonight, in this neighborhood of longtime Scott County citizens. So I don't think that's who you are. I don't think that's what Scott County really wants. You've never said so in your comprehensive plan. Somebody may have talked about expanding the number of tons of refuse taken at the 102 acres in these host agreements or in these solid waste management plans. But that solid waste management plan didn't say you can take borrow from agricultural land if you get it rezoned on 179 acres and maybe 500 acres. That, those agreements didn't say anything about that. You know, if Waste Services wants to increase on the 102 acres and they need more borrow, they need more clay, they can truck it in from someplace rather than getting a rezoning that changes the whole nature of the neighborhood. First of all, it increases the value of their whole operation. Because once they get that rezoning, if they want to sell it to some out-of-state landfill company, it's got a lot more value with that 179 acres rezoned. And at the same time, it reduces the property values of the people who are nearby on Double Culvert Road and on US-25 and in that whole area. So you're just getting a, this one entity is getting an increase in their property values, and all the other citizens around there are getting a decrease. And I don't think that's what Scott County wants to be. Let's go to the, okay, this is, you've seen this before. Mr. Royce showed very similar to this. And you are tasked with this responsibility of looking at it from a comprehensive plan standpoint, as well as what it's gonna do to the citizens in the area. Now let's look at, let's do the next one, Bill. There's the, there's the area. You can see the landfill, which has been disturbed. And nothing else around it, everything else around it is tree. Most of that there at the bottom is the wildlife management area. And then even up above are people, their properties with trees or with crop fields or grazing, pastures, whatever. There's nothing else around here that looks at all like an industrial use. In order to do what they're talking about on the 179 acres, they've gotta bring in heavy equipment to, here's an example of one of the kinds of six-wheel drive vehicles that they have to use to come in and scrape up all the way down to 40 feet down that they're talking about, and pull out that clay and transfer it over to the 102 acres to cover the garbage and the sewage sludge. And so this, this equipment is gonna be out there. It's noisy, it's dirty, it's loud, dusty, whatever, and this is just gonna extend that for years and years. So again, we're not just talking about a landfill on 102 acres. We're talking about a heavy industrial use on 179 acres. If this weren't next to the landfill and somebody had a 179 acres somewhere out in the middle of this green agricultural area in Scott County, would you even think about allowing them to come in and just denude the entire property and cut it down 20 and 30 and 40 feet below its current ridge top levels? No, because you wouldn't have that industrial in the area. In the area, you heard Joe talk about endangered species, for example, in the wildlife management area? Well, that wildlife management area is right next door adjacent to this 500 acres, and the same species are in there. And so you've got, you know, some potential problems there. The ponds that they're gonna put in are gonna be huge. They're looking at football fields, they're, you know, two or 300 feet. Because you need these huge basins to collect the runoff. Let me get into perspective. And I think the next slide is gonna give us a little perspective. Oh, no, this is the, sorry that this is really not very legible up here. So let's just skip over to the next one, Bill. This is a 200-foot-tall pyramid in Egypt. And that's basically what you're, what you're talking about doing here is, you know, the grand pyramids in Egypt. That's what people would look at. I had a gentleman earlier in the day say, he was out in his yard and all of a sudden he looked up and he said, "There was a truck in the sky." And that's just on the current landfill. He looked up from his house, looked up, and there was this truck up. He thought it was dangling, that what it was was on a hydraulic thing where they lift it up and then just empty the load out up at the top of one of these hills. Well, you do that at the top of a 200-foot, and that, it'll probably be visible from Lexington. Lexington will say, "Oh, yeah, there's our garbage. Glad to see it." So to build this, you know, to take this clay from this 179 acres, and eventually from all 500 probably, and from all 500 probably, and pile it up 200 feet tall is just not something that's in your plan. It's not in your plan, something to do, to do that. This landfill, and then you've heard some different figures about tons of garbage, but let's say 6 million tons of garbage. All of Scott County generates about 40,000 tons per year. 6 million tons could go on this landfill, or more. That amount of space would last Scott County 150 years. If that's all you're going to do is put Scott County in there, or even some of the smaller surrounding areas. But in order to take all of Lexington's trash and trash from other places and the sewage sludge, you've got a contract with Lexington to bring all of that up here and put it in your county. 6 million tons, that's 400,000 truckloads of garbage. It's a lot of truckloads. Now, right now, they're estimating that they have 114 truckloads of garbage coming in per day. And what they also have is they've also been having 114 empty trucks leaving. So it's 228 truck trips going on Double Culvert Road and US 25 during each day. And we'll talk about some of those trucks in a little bit here. And what they're going to do, they're going to clear the land of all the trees and vegetation. They're going to basically strip mine 2.5 million yards of soil from the land. They're going to bury the wetlands. And in order to do that, they have to pay some money to the feds in order to bury these wetlands. And they're going to bury 6,000 feet of streams. They're going to construct ponds that look like big football fields, if I've said, and then build 100-foot-wide roads on the property. It's just not what agricultural land in the center of North Scott County should be doing. That is a little overview of what, of what you can expect from this. I'm going to change over now and bring in a wonderful expert, Mr. Greg Dale. And you've got his full resume in front of you. But let me just for record, say a little bit about Greg. He is a founding principal of McRide, Dan O'Clory, and a planning and zoning consulting firm in Cincinnati. He is a graduate of Georgetown College. Best family. And a master's of community planning from the University of Cincinnati, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners as our most good planner. An adjunct faculty member of the University of Cincinnati. Has 30 years' experience preparing comprehensive plans, zoning codes, in 20-plus states across the country, including in Kentucky, Barstown, Nelson County, Frankfurt, Franklin County, and Elizabeth Town. He conducts planning commission training nationwide and the co-author of several books, including The Planning Commissioner's Guide and The Citizen's Guide to Planning. And I'd like to say one little thing, because Greg wouldn't tell you this. He is a member of the College of Fellows of the American Institute of Planners. Here's the description of that College of Fellows. This is an exclusive group. Fellows of AICT are honored in recognition of the achievements of the planner as an individual, elevating the fellow before the public in the profession as a model planner who has made significant contributions to planning and society. Fellowship is granted to planners who have been members of AICT and have achieved excellence in professional practice, teaching and mentoring, research, public and community service, and leadership. Those chosen become members of the College of Fellows. Greg Dale is a member of the College of Fellows, an exclusive group. And I'd like to call on him now to continue our presentation.
Thank you for that kind and welcoming, embarrassing introduction. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm happy to be here this evening. I'm going to try to drill down a little bit into some of the issues that Mr. Porter talks about. I'm going to try not to be duplicative of testimony. I'm also going to talk a little bit about some of the other things that you've heard, in particular, Mr. Kane. I'm going to try not to duplicate what he said either, because frankly, much of what he says in the staff report probably agree with. My task was, that was put to me as a planner, was very simple, and that is to look at the facts that are available before us and determine whether or not a map amendment from A1 to I2 meets the requirements of the factual findings required by KRS 100.213. So in doing that, I reviewed the application, I reviewed the staff report, I reviewed your comprehensive plan and much of the history that was described earlier. I reviewed your zoning regulations and other, other related documentation to try to come to my opinion. You have seen this language many times before. I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor this point. I do want to make the point, though, that this language that you see is language that is reflective of a core planning principle. And that is the idea that we want zoning to be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And the reason for that is important. It's more than just a statutory checklist or statutory requirement. It's really designed to put communities in the position where they're not reacting to land use decisions on a case-by-case basis, but they're doing it within the context of a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan, not a wide range of community planning history, but specifically the comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan is the statement of policy, it's a statement of intent that is designed to be the basis for zoning regulations. So I won't, again, I won't belabor the point. You understand that the first finding that is required is whether it's in agreement with the comprehensive plan, but in the absence of such finding, there are actually what amount to three other issues. One is whether or not existing zoning is inappropriate and whether the proposed zoning, excuse me, zoning is appropriate. You've heard all that before. And then you have this language about the changes. And I want to be very careful here, because to me, the operative language here is what you see highlighted there, that those changes, whatever those changes might be, have resulted and have altered the basic character of the area. So when we talk about those issues, we're not just talking about vague changes in economics or market and so forth. All of those are potentially appropriate. But the real key is it has to have altered the basic character of the area. And I will, I'll come back to that in just a minute. So my opinion, I'll summarize them here, and then I'll come back and address each one of them, is that first of all, the request is not in agreement with the comprehensive plan, that the existing zoning is appropriate, that the proposed zoning is inappropriate, and that there have been no major changes which substantially altered the basic character of the area. And what I'd like to do is just take those one at a time. I'm not going to belabor this point. I basically agree with your staff on this. The request is not in agreement with the comprehensive plan. It's recommended for rural agriculture in your, and you have to look in the land use classifications. Agriculture is a term that's used that's applied to the rural, and it does not, you read that language, it does not include a landfill or any form of industrial extraction, storing or processing of mineral or raw material. I also want to make the point that what's being proposed here, keep in mind, is a jump from the least intensive zoning that you have, the A1, to the most intensive zoning you have, which is the I2. In other words, if you look in your code, they go from agricultural through the residential, you know, single-family, multifamily, through the business, through the light industrial, and the most intensive zoning category is the I1. So it's not like you have somebody requesting a zone change from A1 to R1 or R2 or R3, going from one end of the zoning continuum, the A1, to the other end of the zoning continuum, which is a big league. I also want to talk just for a second about this urban service boundary, because it was, it was hit on. I understand that. But one of the things that I would hope that you would appreciate, I work with communities all over the country, and many of those communities, some of those communities try some variation of what in effect is a growth management tool that's designed to draw a boundary around where you want the more intensive growth to occur, to preserve agricultural or rural areas. You may or may not appreciate this, because this has been a part of your planning culture for so long, but that's actually a very progressive planning concept. Lots of communities have tried that, some have been successful, some have been not so successful. As was mentioned, I went to, I went to college here. I graduated in 1979. I still have family here. I come back regularly. I've watched Georgetown grow. I remember it was 8,600 people. That was the population. I remember there was a sign when I was in school. So I've seen the changes. So yes, it's grown a lot. But that makes it all the more remarkable that you've held the line on these urban service boundaries, right? You can still drive around the rural areas, and they're rural. That's by design. So the concern would be that if you allow this to essentially jump outside, this meaning an I2 zoning classification, jump outside those urban service boundaries, first of all, that's not consistent with the plan. The urban development is outside the urban service boundary, discouraged industrial uses should be within it. This is an industrial zone. You have the potential to essentially do damage to the integrity of that urban service boundary by creating the precedent of putting an I2 zoning classification out in the middle of a rural area, and nothing like that has been done before. So I think that's very important to understand. Couple of other things about the plan that really haven't been talked about, just touched on. One of which is you do have language in your plan about industrial developments, large industrial developments, being a quarter of a mile from an interchange, proximate to an interchange. This is, depending on how you measure it, two and a half, three miles. Double Culvert Road is designated as a rural minor collector in your comprehensive plan. The language on the third bullet describes what that rural minor collector does, what it's intended to be in planning language, the functional classification of that, of that tree, to provide linkages between farms, subdivisions, and rural communities to other major collectors that then provide direct routes to arterial and urban communities. So this is an industrial zoning that would perpetuate and expand an industrial-scale use on a, using roads on a rural minor arterial. Couple of other goals, and I appreciate that this can get a little bit confusing, because you are kind of straddling your previous comprehensive plan and your new comprehensive plan, which has partially been adopted, is still in the works, the Gray Scott Plan. But I, so I've kind of looked at both of them. So you have some longstanding goals and objectives. So the first one that talks about development should be designed with sensitivity for the shape and characteristics of the land. Sorry, the highlighting got messed up there. Sensitivity for the shape and characteristics of the land is one of your goals in the, in the environmental element. And here we have, you know, major hilltop removal, deforestation, streams buried, and so forth. The same goal talks about protection of habitats of significant animal and plant species. You've already heard discussion about how the wildlife management area has many of those characteristics. It talks about conflicts between agricultural and non-agricultural uses needing to be minimized, and it talks about maintaining the aesthetic character of rural roads. That photograph might look very familiar, was in the paper just recently due to an unfortunate accident involving one of the trucks on this rural minor arterial. It was also mentioned that one of the proposed conditions is that all of the truck traffic, at least that could be controlled, would no longer go south on I-25. And again, that might be good news to the people who live south of Double Culvert Road off of 25. But that does mean that that traffic is now being directed through exit 136. That's the plan that the county recently completed for the Sadieville interchange. And the language that you see quoted there, Sadieville would be well-served by creating a unique destination and identity at their interchange tied to its historic path. That interchange is a gateway to Sadieville, right? If you're, if you're going to Sadieville off of I-75, you're going through that interchange. And the community, the county has identified that interchange as a potential area where it wants to have some, some, you know, essentially well-designed, high-end land uses that are reflective of the culture and history of the area. And directing all of those trucks to go through that area would, would potentially interfere with that. The request is also not in agreement with the, with the Gray Scott Plan. It was interesting that it was characterized that the Gray Scott Plan doesn't say anything about the landfill, and that's, and that's true, other than a little bit of language about reducing the amount of waste disposed in the landfill. But what that means is that the plan doesn't call for the expansion of this major use. So my, my point would be that if this expansion of this major use, a regional landfill, if it were to be contemplated in the plan, it would say so. And there is nothing in the plan that, that suggests that. The plan does have some related goals that talk about protecting water quality, environmentally sensitive areas, places that are rich are built environment-forming character, protecting and enhancing the natural, historic, and cultural landscapes that give Scott County its unique image, encouraging agriculture and economic growth in Scott County. But one of the things that's also important is when you look at the back of the, of the current, well, I'm telling you, you know this, when you look at the back of the plan, there's what's called an implementation section, right? And there's, implementation sections in plan are essentially the to-do list. What are the things that we need to do as a follow-up to this plan? There is nothing in there about considering a regional landfill or an expansion of the landfill. So if the plan had contemplated this idea of Scott County planning to be the location for an, an expanding regional landfill, it would have been mentioned in this plan, and it wasn't. Now, I do want to take a little bit deeper dive into this, into this issue of the 1991 plan update, because that was referred to early in applicant, in their, in their application letter, indicates as early as the 1991 conference plan update, it was understood that further expansion of the city's landfill would be necessary. So I looked at the language, the same language that was referred to earlier. And it does, in fact, call for an expansion of the landfill. It calls for an expansion of the landfill from where it was at the time onto the 102 acres. And the area that we're talking about now for the zone change is the area that we're showing in yellow. But here's what's important about that. And if you read those couple of pages that's in there, it becomes clearer. What that plan says is that there is a potential need for a regional landfill. And it did even say that Scott County might be a suitable location for that. But what it did is it called for future planning. It essentially put off for another day this question of whether beyond that 102 acres, that should be a regional landfill. It said a decision to have a major landfill of this type, a regional landfill, in Scott County must be made with full participation by local governments and citizens. But it doesn't answer that question. It puts it off for another day. By the way, it kind of foreshadowed what we're facing here, because it said, it discourages private landfills, privately owned landfills, because they must accept out-of-county and possibly out-of-state waste. But it does not call for the future expansion beyond that current site. Okay, so let me turn to the second test, which is whether the existing zoning is appropriate. And I won't belabor this, because you've already heard much about this. It is zoned in agreement, A1, in agreement with the plan. You know that it's surrounded by miles of A1 zoning. That's the site there. As the pro flies, that's about a mile, so you can draw a mile, at least, more, a mile circle around it. And it's zoned A1, and you can see the purpose statement for the, for the A1 there. And when I looked at the applicant's submittal, there's some interesting language in there that's a little bit tough to work through, because it appears that they're arguing that the existing zoning is inappropriate, because it borders the landfill and that uses that support the landfill are not permitted, and therefore, the landfill cannot expand. I, I struggled with that a little bit. It seems to me like that's kind of a circular argument that says that the zoning's basically not appropriate, because it doesn't allow the expansion, but the expansion isn't contemplated in the, in the conference plan. And I think that frankly is a little bit faulty logic, because if you think about it, if, if you're basically saying, when land abuts a landfill, it's not appropriate for A1, that sets a precedent for, for the future. And I think that's something at least to be... sets a precedent for the future, and I think that's something at least to be considering. Okay, so the third test is whether or not the existing, I'm sorry, whether the proposed zoning is appropriate or not, and in my opinion, it is not. So this is the language from the zoning code, right? The language that describes the I-2, the purpose of the I-2. Look at some of the language in here. This is, if this community were to approve an I-2 zoning, it would be making the determination that these are the kinds of uses that would be appropriate in the middle of this rural area. Uses that create emissions, that might create atmospheric pollution, odors, noise, vibrations that may be heard or felt off the premises. So that's the operative language for the I-2. And contrast that with some of the language we've been looking at here in the comprehensive plan for the agriculture, preserve and protect, sensitivity for the shape and characteristics of the land, conflict between agricultural and non-agricultural being minimized, and so forth and so on, and the language that you've already heard about from the wildlife management area. So it's not in agreement with the comprehensive plan, that is the proposed zoning. It abuts the major new wildlife management area. It introduces the most intense zoning that you have in the middle of a rural area. There is no place that I could find on your zoning map where there's industrial zoning of this magnitude. It's almost like, if you were to look at that map and pull it out, it's almost like a word of exercise. There's a couple of little pieces of a couple of acres here and there that are zoned industrial outside of the area that look like the remnants of some old development, but nothing of this magnitude has been zoned industrial outside of the urban growth boundary. And it would create a structure that's out of character with the area. So let me just talk about that. We heard a little bit about that. So this is the plan that you've seen before. The elevation, a lot of highlights are shown here. That's 970 at the base, about 1174 at the top, so it's plus or minus 200 feet. But that's hard to envision sometimes when, you know, you're hearing all of these numbers. So I actually did some research. There are three buildings in downtown Lexington that are almost exactly 200 feet tall. That's the height, just to give you perspective, if you want to go look at those buildings. That's the height of what this landfill would be. And again, the claim of the, and the application itself, is that the proposed zoning is appropriate because it would allow the landfill-related activities to occur. And again, I find that to be a little bit of a circular logic that the proposed zoning is appropriate, essentially because it allows the expansion. All right, so let me turn to this concept of the major changes. This is a common standard, or some variation of the standard is very common in communities around the country. Now, the applicant has talked about how that changes in the zoning interpretation, changes in landfill gas technologies, and those sorts of things have resulted in changes, and those may very well be changes. But when you look at that language, it specifically refers to alter the basic character of such areas. So these kinds of standards are designed to deal with physical changes in the vicinity. So the idea is you adopt the comprehensive plan, time goes by, things happen around an area, and somebody comes in and says, hey, wait a minute, when you adopted that comprehensive plan, things have changed so much that that designation just no longer makes sense. But when you look at the conditions around it, you can see this, I don't have to tell you this, you drive around, you know, nothing really has changed in terms of land use patterns in that area that would suggest that the existing zoning is no longer reasonable. And in fact, this is a really critical point, I think. You just went through a major update process to a comprehensive plan, right? You're required to do it every five years. You're required to kind of go back and look at your plan. You just went through kind of a once-in-a-generation update. That comprehensive plan looked at changes, right? It looked at growth rates that were discussed earlier. It looked at land use patterns. It relooked at everything. And it did not conclude that changes occurred in this area to suggest otherwise. There is no landfill expansion that was called for. If there were ever a time that the county was going to step back and say, let's look at that area, let's see if changes have occurred in that area to the point that we need to rethink that, it would have been through that great Scott planning effort. By very, by its very nature of a major comprehensive plan update, it looked at changed conditions and did not conclude that the landfill should be expanded. So let me just summarize. You know, we talked about how the expansion of the old Georgetown landfill onto the current boundary was in fact planned in the early 90s to serve local needs. It deferred future planning to consider the possibility of further expansion, and it did in fact talk about, maybe we should be a regional landfill. But in, between 1991 and now, how many five-year increments was that? Five, five times when the county was required to go back and revisit this, one of which was a major update. It never addressed that issue. It never said, it never looked at the comprehensive implications of becoming a regional landfill. It never worked with other communities. It never came back to that idea. It never called for the expansion of it. And had it, had it intended for there to be an expansion of something of the magnitude of a regional landfill, a comprehensive plan would have addressed it. Citizens have a right to rely on that. The other thing I'd point out is there is nothing that says that landfills can expand indefinitely, right? They're designed to have a life, and they're designed to be closed. You see that plan that I showed you earlier, that's their closure plan, right? That's, there's one of those that exists for the current plan. Landfills are designed to have a life and then they close. And the only interpretation I can come up with from your current plan is that what's contemplated there because it never said anything more about it expanding. And growing communities often don't dedicate rural property to waste disposal. There's another idea I'd like to put on the table for you to think about, and that is this concept of slot zoning, right? Slot zoning is one of those terms that we all hear about, and we all kind of grew up with in planning, and we were always, you know, cautioned against, right? Slot zoning is kind of, is kind of the opposite of good, sound planning and zoning. Zoning of a single parcel within a larger area that is uniform zoning is an exception that provides a benefit to one parcel, especially when it's not in agreement with the comprehensive plan. It's an exception that's provided to one owner. That's something that you might at least think about. This is a single parcel within a sea of A1 zoning, all of which is consistent with your comprehensive plan. So I do come to the conclusion, based upon all the reasons that I've stated here, that the request is not in agreement with the plan, that the A1 zoning is appropriate, that the I-2 zoning is inappropriate, and there have been no major changes which substantially altered the basic character of the area. So let me just conclude with one final thought. And that is that this forum that you're sitting in right now is not how this decision should be made, right? We can look at comprehensive plans, and we can look at communities, and we can say, there are small decisions and there are big decisions. The decision that you have before you about a regional landfill is a big decision. It's a decision that frankly shouldn't be made under the glare and pressure of this kind of a forum. It's a decision that should be made within the context of a comprehensive plan. That's why those requirements exist. If there is an argument to be made that this should be the site of another expansion and a longer-range regional landfill, that's a fair debate for the community. And the community can weigh comprehensively the cost and benefits of that, the impacts of that, what that means for the community in a deliberative process through a comprehensive plan process. This is not that process. It's clear to me at least that this proposal is not in agreement with your comprehensive plan. And my humble opinion is I don't think that the facts support the findings that you would be referring to. So thank you very much for your time.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions for Mr. Dale? Not this time.
I do have one question. Is that microphone working now? If central, is this thing working?
Nope.
Nope. It's trying to work, but it won't. How to speak loudly? If they've spelled out that 9.6 million, or 8.5, the large amount, that 9.6 million tons, if they should decide to truck in, to truck in clay from elsewhere, would that not be a bigger problem for us than, than what? That's my only concern right there, is that if they pursue that route, then we have a lot more.
No, I understand the question. I think, I think the issue is, I think there's a question first of all about how much they can expand as a non-conforming. Keep in mind, they are a non-conforming, and their use is not permitted for that, for that area. But the question of, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Could you repeat your question again?
As far as trucking in the clay and from elsewhere, bringing it in, in order to, in order to continue on the same.
Right, and I would assume that that's even economically feasible. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if that would be possible for them to do or not.
Go ahead. Turned it off. Well, I turned it off.
I think it's trying to figure it out.
Any more questions, Mr. Dale, from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
Sorry, no, I'm not.
Okay. You can see him out there.
Strong version of the Bible. He bridged the verse.
Before we show the next slide of the video, talk a little bit about what landfills are and why these people out here are so concerned about it. Everybody's got this little pamphlet that we put out, got various things in it, Mr. Dale's full bio. And then the next sections are some summary tables of environmental regulatory violations on this current landfill. And then incident reports, people have called in problems. And these are just summary tables. The binder that I've given you, a copy of Mr. Roy's, is a copy of all of those incident reports in, what, 2017, and then all the violations from maybe like about 10 years, I think, back to 2009 or something like that. These are people calling in and saying the stinks, their trucks are bad, or whatever it is. And then also, where inspectors have come out and inspected and come up with violations of landfills. And that happens with a lot of landfills. So let's show a little video here. Got that? Just an example of what happens in a landfill.
If the county owns a landfill, you might think it knows what's being dumped there. But a new Channel 5 investigation found that's not always the case. Investigator reporter Ben Hall discovered a battle over toxic waste has spilled beyond the boundaries of a local landfill.
Concerned about what all that, where all that leachate's going?
Of course, of course we are.
Decatur County Mayor Mike Prese took us on a tour of the landfill. His county actually owns it. But in 1996, the county turned over the operation to a private company.
You got this publicly reputable company that is operating in a landfill.
Two years later, the private company went to the state and got that special approval to accept 35,000 tons of aluminum slag each year. It's possible the county had no idea this was coming.
Oh, please, please.
State officials approved the special waste with no public hearing.
I cannot find any documentation whatsoever that the county was informed of any aluminum drops.
Decatur Waste Services operates the landfill and says the county should have known because it got royalties from the extra money it received for taking the special waste.
Of course, when they put the liner down, it's when we first arrived, as you see over here.
The mayor claims the orange on the landfill lining shows the leachate problem. Drone video shows it on the lining, but the company said the orange was just rainwater mixed with dirt. Now state officials have changed course, saying it was wrong to allow aluminum slag in the landfill.
But it's a lot of things in life. You go along with it, you go along, and so I just, I thought things were done back in the day, it would never be done today, and we would never want that today.
Decatur Waste Services says it's too expensive to haul the toxic leachate to places like Dyersburg, so it's dragging it in this contract and walk away, leaving the landfill to the county.
That would be our worst nightmare. We're a county of 12,000, 12,000 people. There's no way we've got the expertise to run an operation like this.
In a federal lawsuit, Decatur Waste Services points out its 1996 contract clearly requires the county to dispose of the leachate. But Decatur County's small treatment plant can't handle it because of that aluminum slag.
Hey, we've got this issue, let's dump it on the little Decatur county. They're picking up the fines.
The state says this is a contract dispute. The mayor says he had helped get them into this mess by approving that special waste back in 1998. There's no way you could claim this.
There is no possible way, no possible way. One year would wipe out our entire budget.
The state has done regular inspections of the landfill and says it's operating safely. The concern here is what happens going forward. Could this operator just walk away and leave the landfill to a small county? Ben Hall, New Channel 5 investigates.
Just to point out that this problem did not occur during the ownership, but originally this landfill was owned by a sister company to Waste Services of the Bluegrass. Other things happened, and you've got in your presentation. Here we've got, and this is things that have occurred, and you've got documentation both in the big binder in very detail and in your small binder, of repeated disregard of state reporting requirements, operational violations that create nuisances for the folks who live near the landfill, and serious violations that have the potential to jeopardize the health and safety of Scott County residents with potentially grave consequences to the environment. And I'm sad to use that word grave because we have had in the last year a Scott County citizen killed because of an accident between two garbage disposal trucks.
I'll take exit 136.
The Waste Services has done these violations, and they're listed in that big binder. The, there are other things, the nuisance violations, trucks dragging mud onto the public roads, that's existed for years in this particular place. It is a constant problem, and you will hear probably from some neighbors who will talk about the mud. This shows, it's kind of hard to see, but this shows a road with mud on it. And then the, we can't show you a slide with odors, that didn't come out, but you'll hear some testimony about odors. And our next slide is getting into the leachate problem, again, the garbage juice. And these are slides and photographs that were taken, not by us, but were taken by the state inspector of the leachate problem. So let's go ahead with showing those. And this is, you see with the watery area there, that is garbage juice. And that is, that's dangerous stuff. It's, that's not just water that, you know, has a little dust or sand or something in it. It's got the remnants of whatever is in that garbage, in that landfill. And these are pictures of it escaping beyond the edge of the plastic liner and going directly, and if you read the language below some of this, it talks about going directly into the waterways in the current 102-acre property. So these kind of things are occurring now, and these are the kind of things that we would like to see stopped and not be allowed to go on for another 20 or 30 years. But let's get this thing closed down, or at least kept to a minimum so that they can handle the leachate and other problems. If they didn't have 228 trucks a day going in and out, in 114 times and out 114 times, it'd probably be a whole lot easier to keep the dust off the road, for example. landfill had almost 23, 4 years of life left. Now, it has less than four, just the 3.96 years of life. So, that's why they want to get this, all this clay off the 179 acres, so that they can then use it to build the 200-foot-tall pyramid on the property that you'll be able to see for miles and miles, or maybe be a tourist attraction from the interstate, Scott County Pyramid. But, I don't think that's what you want for Scott County. So, obviously, they need to, they need this clay in order to build that pyramid, and it's up to you, I think, to prevent that. They've had electronic waste in this, and they didn't just have a truckload if somebody brought in a bunch of computers or TVs. For three years, for three years, cathode ray tubes, also known as CRT waste. Cathode ray tubes, CRTs, things that you find in TVs, computers. The average TV or computer contains four pounds of lead, according to the Environmental Protection Agency. For three years, this landfill on the 102 acres accepted hazardous waste. Finally, a notice of violation was issued, and this matter was referred to the Division of Enforcement. And the records then showed that 22,547 tons of this waste was disposed of at this central Kentucky landfill over a period of more than three years. 76% of the waste was transported to the landfill in Waste Service Bluegrass's own trucks. These are the kind of things that can happen in landfills and have happened in this landfill. They went through the process and ended up being fined, told, don't ever do this again. But, for three years, three years, they were, they were doing this and taking this. And they, anybody who operates a landfill knows you don't take that stuff. You just don't take that stuff. Not without having a special place for preparation and for removing the lead and removing whatever is in there that is dangerous to get into the ground and the water system. Next. Again, we're getting, let's go to the next, this is the, yeah, Fayette County. And this is the methane. Just a, I think, kind of a funny aside here is that the arrangement with Toyota on the methane, and I, I hope you're going to get some testimony from somebody who came up earlier who works at, at Toyota, saying that the amount of electricity that Toyota gets from this methane is minute compared to their total electrical needs. It's a nice little thing, it sounds good ecologically, it's a good little conservation thing to do the methane that way, burn it instead of letting it go in the air. But, it's really a minor thing. You can't call it a major change that would justify a zoning change. But, the city of Lexington gets 20% of whatever Toyota pays the landfill for that methane, for that electricity. Does the city of Georgetown get any of it? Does Scott County get any of it for that, for that electricity? No, the city of Lexington gets it. And the theory is that Lexington's bringing in all the garbage, so they're the ones that are going to get it. But, you all in Scott County are not getting it. Now, capacity, and this is an important question, and somebody in the workshop asked this, and I'll just kind of paraphrase, basically like, well, if something happens that we, because they don't get their zoning and they end up closing this landfill, what's Scott County going to do? Well, here's just one little sample. In the economic area, which is outlined in red, going up into northern Kentucky and around Scott County and Grant County, whatever, these are some areas. There is now, that, the landfill capacity in cubic yards of 56 million, 56 million cubic yards available within short distances. It is available. As a matter of fact, in, again, back in 2015, when they were negotiating, and there was some contention in, in Lexington about whether they should have this contract, and one of the things that was asked is, well, what happens if you all close your landfill or something like that? And WSB's response was, oh, we have arrangements with other landfills, we can take, they can all take it all, don't worry. And that was till Lexington with this huge amount of landfill. So, I don't think you have any worry at all about, by comparison to the Lexington garbage, only 11% of the, of the stuff that goes on this landfill is coming from Scott County. The rest of it is from out of county, most of it Lexington and some other areas. But, only 11% is Scott County. You'll still have, that 11% can go somewhere in one of these other counties, or it could even go into this landfill if they kept it open. But, it would be taking the whole landfill at a, at a much lower level and probably even more acceptable. Prices, we've, we've looked at some of the prices in their places, and they truck out all of their garbage to other landfills in other counties, and they don't pay, Georgetown residents now pay $15 a month to have their garbage garbage. Anderson County, which sends their garbage out, only pays $10.48 a month. Jessamine County, notice that's not Jessamine County, it's Jessamine County, right? Pay $9.57 a month, and they truck it out. So, you know, you're not going to get a really expensive problem by having, and you've got private haulers here in town, Rumpie and others, that haul it out to, to other counties, to their landfill someplace, and they're not out of luck with what it costs now for you all. Talked about Toyota, a minor thing. Truck traffic. Let's talk about that. You saw earlier, this is a little thing, neighborhood, neighborhood wants safer roads. And let's get this, it's a real short video.
Rubber tubing says it's terrifying to drive on US 25, because there's so many big trucks out on the road.
Big garbage trucks that are the same width as the lane they're in. I mean, they, they have no room to finagle anything. Even following behind, it scares you because they're, they're weaving like this, and you know, they're going around a corner, it's like, well, are they going to hit somebody and then cause an accident? And this is something that the neighbors, you know, I've been working with these wonderful people for the last year and a half, two years, and that's, that's all I hear, is trucks, trucks. They drive down the middle of the road, and when two trucks pass each other, they, they come on the side of the road and knock my fence down. And somebody had a dog killed by one of the trucks, was run over, and the dog was in the yard there. So, yeah, you've seen the pictures about, here's this filled sewage truck, that just occurred last two, three weeks. And then, we've also had, and you can see that, you know, the ruts on the side of the road, we've also had, we had a, a problem with a school bus coming from the elementary school over there that was sideswiped by a garbage truck. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, very fortunately. But, let me tell you, I talked to the principal of that school, and it scared her, it really scared her. And she was very upset about, about these trucks. School buses, you know, I, I live on a narrow street too, we don't have any big, huge garbage trucks coming down, but if you have a, some kind of a little, just even a little dump truck and a, and a, and a school bus passing, somebody's going to lose a mirror. I lost my, I lost my mailbox the other day. My wife said, I'm going to put up a brick column. I said, no, you have to put up a brick column until somebody hits up and dies, we get sued. It's got to be a breakaway. So, anyway, it happens on narrow roads, that's what happens. And with these big trucks, two of them passing each other, they have to go onto land on the side of the road. There's just no way around it. Now, here is some, some pictures. This was when the crash on 25, go on to the next one. See the two garbage trucks, one on the foreground and one on the back, and these are the two that were involved in the accident. You see the headline there, the news graphic, one person dead after a morning accident on US 25. Those were two garbage trucks going to this landfill. These roads, you heard Mr. Dale talk about, you know, the comprehensive plan says you need to be close, and the roads need to be able to handle this kind of traffic. Double culvert road can't handle it. US 25, even if it's a federal road, is too narrow and windy in many places, you all traveled those, and they can't handle it. Especially with the amount, I mean, 228 trips, they're passing each other all the time. And when they're passing each other, it makes it even worse. If there were just a few trucks coming in in the morning and a few going out in the afternoon, it might be okay, but that's not what happens. That is not what is happening. So, in conclusion here, the statutory requirements we've talked about, I'm not going, sorry, I'm not going to go over those anymore. I've got it in my notes, but I'm not going to do any more on that. You've heard me talk about it, you've heard Mr. Dale talk about it. But, let me just say, the idea of spot zoning, great Scott does not mean great spot. Spot zoning is not something that you should approve. And this spot zoning would open the door to another 321 acres, it would open the door to 20, 30, 40, 50 years of these trucks, of leachate, of dust, odor, dirt on the roads, on roads that can't handle it, and odor in people's houses. I had one lady say that, and this is a lady who does not drive anymore, who, in the middle of the night, the odor was so bad, she said, if I had a car, I'd drive to a motel and spend the night. But, I can't, because I don't have a car, I don't drive anymore. The odor is so bad. And if you go through all these, these notice of violations and the incident reports, you'll see that time after time after time in there. So, I want to address one more, one more issue, the idea of rezoning just a smaller area. And Joe Kay put that in his report, I guess I'd say I wish he hadn't done that, I wish he just quit with it doesn't comply. But, he's realistic, he knows that there might always be some reasons why you as a planning commission might say, well, we disagree with you, and we're going to let him do a little bit, or we're going to do some more, so he made a suggestion. But, the biggest problem with that is, if 26 acres or whatever acreage comes out becomes heavy industrial, 474 more are going to follow eventually. The precedent will be set, this would be the change of a physical nature that would justify futurism, future rezoning. If you even rezone 26 acres, that Joe said it could be a revol- possibility, you set it up, the next time Mr. Royce comes in here and says, oh, well, we're going to just rezone industrial right next to industrial. That's pretty easy. That makes it a lot easier for the next planning commission. You all might not be on that board, but five years from now or six years from now, they want phase three or four, or whatever it is. It's a whole lot easier if they've already got that heavy industrial zoning right there next door, the 179 next door to the 321. So, rezoning a smaller area just, just doesn't, you're still going to have the same number of trucks, if not more, you're still going to have a 200-foot-tall pyramid, you're still going to have 20,000 truckloads of garbage, you know, you're still going to have all of that. And just rezoning a little bit is kind of a, oh, well, we'll be nice and just give you a little bit, and that, you know, that kind of, a happy medium? No, it's not a happy medium. The only happy medium here is to say, you've got the right to have a landfill on your 102 acres, that's all you're going to get. That's all you get. The 179 acres, the 500 acres next door is agricultural, that's what our plan says it is, and that's what it shall remain, as the citizens of this county have said in their comprehensive plan, and as the citizens in this room and in other places will tell you it should remain. That is all I have. We will also submit a motion for a recommendation of denial with findings of fact. We'll give those out to you. But, I would like now for the chair to allow some members of the public, and let me do this, all you want to focus, people. I want you to say some things, but I don't want you to get up here and do a diatribe for 10 minutes, okay? Mr. Royce and I have done that enough for everybody. You hopefully want to hear a whole lot more of that. If you live on double culvert, or you live on 25, and odor is terrible to you, give them your name, give them your address, and say the odor is awful all the time, or part of the time, or whatever, or I've seen trucks drive through my driveway, my yard, and knock my fence down, and then sit down, okay? You've got a good contract with me, so don't, don't take up any more time with these ladies and gentlemen than is necessary. But, I do want you to say, thanks for the record, I want it to be known that there are private citizens in the area who have seen all of these things happen, that what happens at a landfill. A landfill in the right location wouldn't be the problem. This is in the wrong location to begin with, and to expand it in this location is even worse.
At this time, we'll let Mr. Royce.
Any questions?
Didn't buy any questions. At this time, we'll have Mr. Royce, if you want to have any rebuttal to anything yet.
I'm waiting till I have a public comment, if that's a pleasure, Chair.
Did we get the sign-in sheet? Cross-examination of Mr. Dale. Everybody who attends to speak, if you want to come up and form a line. You ready to go? If you'll just come up, state your name, and your address, and then you can make your We might need to take another five minutes real quick. If that's okay, we're going to take five minutes real quick.